We are recording. We just allowing everyone to get access in from the waiting room and then we'll get started.
Are you ready to?
Yeah, I'm in.
And I would ask everyone to please mute yourselves. Good afternoon. This is a hearing before the Boston Cannabis Board. Today is Wednesday, August 12th, 2020. This hearing is being conducted pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order temporarily modifying portions of the open meeting law. This is what allows this hearing to be conducted virtually. The hearing is being reported and will be posted to the city's website. Now I will introduce Chairwoman Kathleen Joyce.
Thank you, Leslie. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. I'd like to introduce the other commissioners of the Boston Cannabis Board. I'm joined today by Commissioner Lisa Holmes, Commissioner Darlene Lombos, Commissioner John Smith, and newly sworn-in Commissioner Alejandro Sanz. Thank you.
You can ensure that you're muted unless you are presenting today. The applications before the BCB today will be called in the order in which they began the licensing process and which the application was deemed complete, beginning with an equity applicant to ensure adherence to the ordinance. Once called, the applicant and its team will make a presentation to the board. The chairwoman and each respective commissioner will then have the opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant. If the applicant is an equity applicant pursuant to the ordinance, Attorney Chela White with the Office of Economic Development will testify regarding the equity status of the applicant and her process and will then answer any questions from the board regarding the same. Following the presentation, the board will accept public testimony in support of the application, beginning with elected officials or their representatives, and then following with testimony in opposition to the application, beginning again with elected officials or their representatives. If you have emailed requesting to testify, you will be called in the order in which you requested to testify. If you have not, please utilize the chat function to provide your name, address, and affiliation if any. You will be called in that order. Please note that questions in the chat or private messages will not be answered. Any questions should be emailed to cannabisboard@boston.gov. It's important to note that today's testimony will be limited to the specific application at the specific location being considered. Testimony will not be accepted regarding prior applicants, future applicants, the legalization of cannabis, or any other matters. Pursuant to the ordinance establishing equitable regulation of the cannabis industry in the city of Boston, this board is an independent board tasked with evaluating the time, place, and manner of cannabis applications, while specifically ensuring equity both in the distribution of the licenses issued to applicants and the geographical distribution of licenses throughout the city. The terms and conditions included in the grant of any license by this board will be specifically incorporated into any host community agreement. The host community agreement is not a separate negotiation, but rather memorializes the discussions in the community, the presentation before this board, and any grant of a license by this board. While the board is not the legal entity that executes the host community agreement with an approved licensee, all of these terms will be incorporated. With that, I will call the first applicant. Calling for Dot Medical, Inc., has applied for a recreational cannabis license to be exercised at 1589 Blue Bowl Avenue. The applicant is an equity applicant. Applicant contact, Tito Jackson. Mr. Jackson, are you present?
I am present.
Please note, I am going to share my screen, so please bear with me with any technological issues. This is definitely not my specialty, but for security sake, I will share the applicant's presentation.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Okay, great. I want to thank you for allowing me to present today and also I want to thank you for the opportunity to put on a shirt and tie, which has not happened in about four months, so my dry cleaner also thanks you.
And Mr. Jackson, if you could please just advise when you want me to move on to the next.
Yes, the next screen. Okay. For those, for the record, my name is Tito Jackson. I am a Boston resident. I live at 37 Skylar Street and I actually am the CEO of Verdant Medical. And we are going to be presenting today. We believe fundamentally that there's diversity or the issue of diversity, equity, and inclusion is not a bolt-on, but is actually at the core of all that we do. And as you can see from our depiction, actually friends have asked whether or not this was my research and development team picture, but that is actually not the case. If you can go to the next slide. A little bit about my background. As many of you know, I served on the Boston City Council for seven years and worked in and around many of these issues. One of the things that you may not know is that a significant part of my career was spent in pharmaceuticals and healthcare. I worked for Johnson &amp; Johnson and Eli Lilly and have a great deal of background in the healthcare industry as well as regulated industries that are regulated by the FDA. I then moved on to work for Governor Patrick and helped to attract over 2,500 jobs to the state of Massachusetts. And on April 20th, 2016, I became the first elected official in the state to step forward and back the regulatory environment that we have now, which is legalized cannabis. Very, very proud of being at the forefront of this industry. If you can go to the next slide, that'd be great. We have an amazing team that is very diverse. The majority of our management team are women of color. Lisa Hebron actually has experience in this space and in this industry. And Jennifer Smith owns 12 McDonald's and has significant retail operations as well as just amazing experience in business. Blake Williams has a great deal of experience in growing. As you'll note, Verdant is actually seeking to become vertically integrated, which also means that the employees that we hire in Mattapan will have an opportunity to work at multiple sites as well as to be able to move up the food chain, so to speak. If you can head to the next slide. And we also have an amazing consulting team with over 100 years of experience across the board. From Carrie Bowie, who has a great deal, has two degrees from MIT, has been really helpful in guiding us. Elena Stenson, who's actually a physician and is guiding us in that space. And Sanquita Savaraja, who has helped us on our legal front and actually was just named as one of the top 100 lawyers in the country. So we're very confident about the consulting and legal team that we have partnered with. If you can go to the next slide. We are looking to make sure that our presentation actually fits into the rubric that has been put forward by the city council as well as the board. And the presentation will fall into that space. And most of our time, well, we will, in our presentation, note diversity and inclusion across all of these components, not only as the number one component. If you could move on to the next slide. So just a little bit about Verdant. Verdant is currently a nonprofit. So we obviously know that in the state of Massachusetts, no one owns a nonprofit. And it's 100% black controlled. I am the sole board member. And then, and we have applied to the Cannabis Control Commission for conversion to a for-profit. And at that time, 100% of the equity in Verdant Medical will move over to me. And as noted, our objective is to vertically integrate, which means that we will be cultivating processing as well as retailing. And very critical is that we look to open the doors of economic opportunity for those who've been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs. And we want to make sure that those people who were locked up don't get locked out of this industry. When we're using the rubric given to us by the state in terms of identifying actual components that we are shooting for and then also goals that go along with that. And so the two components that we focused in on is are the reduction of barriers to entry into the commercial adult-use cannabis industry as well as providing business assets, time, organizations, skills, finance towards those folks who are looking to get into the industry. And also, we want to literally help repair the harm that has been done across the state of Massachusetts in this space. And so if you can move forward to the next slide. So in terms of our diversity plan to date and as noted earlier, you know, diversity is not a bolt-on to Verdant. It's actually who we are as a company. And so to date, we've identified AMB General Contractor, a cleaning company, as well as a garbage removal company. And we are going to continue to add to these lists as we identify folks. We have a plan to purchase 10% of our products from individuals who are in the Economic Empowerment Program. That's a state designation as well as the Social Equity Program. And also, we not only want to be a destination in Mattapan, but we want to actually help Mattapan be a destination for all. And one thing that's very critical, in particular in this time during the pandemic, we want to make sure that we help other businesses in and around the Mattapan business area. And so we are creating a shop local card so that the people who are coming to shop at Verdant actually go to Brothers and go to many of the other businesses that are in the Mattapan area. In addition, seniors are a critical component of our community. And for folks who know this business, they're one of the fastest-growing cohorts in this space. And so we actually want to add some employment opportunities, but also educational opportunities for seniors. And we will have basically senior educators that are out in the community to educate our seniors on how to use the product. In addition, the arts is a critical component. And we are going to use our space and place to feature local artists on our walls and rotate them on a monthly or bimonthly basis because art is a critical component to our community and business in our, in our, in our city. If you can move on to the next slide. One of the other components that's critical is people's preparation to be able to get into this new space. Unique to cannabis, most of us are not joining or haven't joined a brand-new industry. And so we've created a program called SETUP with a C, not an S. And it stands for the Cannabis Employment Training Uplift Program. It's essentially an apprentice course that gives people soft skills as well as hard skills in order to be prepared to enter into the industry. And we are going to coordinate with our company, but also multiple other companies as a feeder for folks to have an opportunity to get jobs. We are looking to work in conjunction with multiple nonprofits, Brown's in Boston, Sheriff Tompkins, and actually I've already had conversations with Roxbury District Court Probation Department in order to source talent of those individuals who either are previously incarcerated or are on probation. So that's a critical component. Just to, you'll see this multiple times, but one of the things that we're very proud of is that we're committed to a goal of 20% of our workforce to be individuals with a Corey, someone who has a spouse or parent that has a Corey, because we want those individuals to have an opportunity to participate fully in the cannabis industry. In addition, we look to hold four expungement events so people have an opportunity to clean up their records on an annual basis, as well as three job fairs in Mattapan. And we will also be using Mattapan to source for our other, other sites. In addition, we also look to provide training and help with those individuals to actually get into the industry because we know that wealth is actually, not only, it's actually most often built by people being able to open their own business. And one of the areas that I found to be very difficult is getting the dollars needed to get into this industry as well as the know-how and SOPs for the applications. That's a critical component. If you could. We are looking to hire about 30 employees. We looked at how much people get paid in many other industries. And we know that Boston is a pretty expensive city to work in. We are going over and above the Boston Living Waste Policy and starting everyone at $16 an hour. There are multiple levels in the organization. And you know, our general manager will be making close to six figures. But everybody will be making at least $16 an hour, providing health benefits, a 401K with a matching component to it. Critical is paid, is a paid financial literacy training. We want to make sure that folks know what to do with their dollars. And as noted before, we're holding 20% of our seats for those individuals who have a Corey. And in terms of goals, we are going with 51, 51, 50. So Boston residents, at least 51%. We've thus far were trending way above that. But we do want to take into account that people, families grow, people move. But I, and I would love for that number to be 100%, but we do want to have it at a manageable level in case an individual does move. We want to make sure that we have a majority people of color as well as individuals who, as well as at least 50% women. One of the unique things that we're putting forward is a Dow Payment First-Las Security Fund Assistance, which we're going to seed with about $25,000, which will be a revolving fund for us because we know it's pretty expensive to live in the city of Boston. And these will be grants offered to our employees. Your T-Passes often goes up. We are subsidizing them at 50%. And everyone will have, will have gold-level access to the Blue Bike Program. And on your one-year anniversary, you will get a Verdant bike. So we definitely want folks to be able to, be able to celebrate longevity at the company. Next slide, please. One of the other passions that I personally have and that we have is to be actually reparative. And we know that there are people who haven't had the same opportunities. And then, and those who have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs. So we have created a reparations fund. And this fund is to help individuals actually start their own businesses. They could be cannabis-related or ancillary businesses or other types of businesses. And we are seeding that with $50,000 commitment on an annual basis that we would actually invest in their companies to help individuals start, start their own businesses, which is a critical component and one of the things that we see as lacking in our city. If you could head to the next slide, please. In terms of community support, you have a huge packet. I've tried to save lots of trees because I have several, well over 150 letters. I've scanned them to you. And we have a great deal of community support. We had a community meeting in January of 2019 that was well-attended with over 200 people. And we had a great deal of support at that meeting. In addition, we have a support letter from Russell Holmes as well as the district counselor, city counselor Ricardo Arroyo, who wrote us a letter in support of the Verdant Medical. And we are very, very, very proud of that. We're going to delve down into the security. This is pretty dense. And so I'm going to kind of top-line the, the objectives that we have relative to security. When it comes down to it, the first objective and goal is to prevent underage access. I never want a person under the age of 21 in our facility. We, at some point in the future, possibly could offer medical. And obviously, the rules in medical are a little bit different. But we, we, in our facility, actually check IDs at three points. So one, before you enter the facility. Two, when you get into the facility, your ID will be checked again. And three, before you make a purchase, your ID will then be checked again. At that point, we actually have a policy that we have a contract with the community that you must sign the first time you come to our store. The contract states that you won't litter, loiter, light up, or do anything illegal in and around the community. And that's a critical component. And so we don't want that business. So if that individual violates, you know what? There are, there are other customers that are out there. That's not the type of relationship that I want to have with the community. One of the differences also between me and probably other applicants is that most people have my cell phone number. And so I know the board will, will get a call, but I will get a call. And as probably as what, as what happened when I first got into this industry, my mom, who lives in Florida, will also probably get a call if there is a problem. And that did happen several times when people said, you know, you know, you know what Tito's doing now? So that's a, that's a critical component. If you could head to the next slide. We are, we will fulfill all of the state requirements around access and control. We will have all of the cameras needed in order to make sure that our, our facility is safe. We have 24 by 7 redundant security teams from FTG. And I also, excuse me. And then we also have a redundancy around our alarm system. If you could head to the next slide, please. All of our products will be in locked and secure vaults under video surveillance. And we have a tiered access card system. So these are the key cards like you have at City Hall. But the individuals who have access to the money room, that's a separate coding versus access to the room that will have, that will store product. And we actually have a computer system that tracks every single access, access point and who actually accesses each of those facilities. If you could head to the next slide. We obviously will, will track and weigh all of our products. And we have a zero tolerance policy for diversion from our employees as well as customers who choose to divert or circle product, meaning those individuals who come in to buy from, for someone. That is absolutely not acceptable. If you could head to the next slide. Just to drill down on the youth component, in addition to not allowing folk into the space, one of the other critical components is we will not allow or have product that resembles candies, you know, animal or fruit packaging or caricatures. We absolutely do not want to sell or attract young people. On our website, there was a verification to determine whether or not you're 21 years of age or older. And as I noted before, we actually have two present ID at three points while we're, before you actually purchase. And if you could head through to the next slide. And I think you can head, head through to the, to the next slide. I think the one piece about the last slide was just simply that community members will have the cell phone number of our manager. They will also have my cell phone number. And I will be attending all of the community meetings for the first 12 months of operation. And therefore, we will determine a acceptable relationship in terms of the times in which I am present, but that's a really important component for me. Lastly, in this section, we want to make sure that we don't have issues around queuing. And we are working with some technologies that will allow individuals to use their cell phones to be, to be used for queuing. So there are not long lines when, when we open. We plan on connecting and working with the local police department and coordinating in order to make sure that we have police on-site for opening and the weeks following that. One of the other components is that we prepackage, we are purchasing prepackaged product. So therefore, that limits the odor onsite. As you know, if you are next to a pizza store, it smells like pizza. Hence, if there were open products, you would actually smell it. If you could head to the, the next page. Critical component is, in any neighborhood in Boston, is access and how, how folks are able to get there. The, one of the reasons why we chose Mattapan, in addition to the amazing people there, is that Mattapan Square actually does not currently have housing in the square. And so that actually means that it's one of the kind of last commercial centers in the city with, with no housing. And so we plan on individuals coming through the multiple modes of transportation. There is a robust station there with multiple bus lines, a trolley line, and recently added a commuter rail stop on the Fairmont Line as well as the Blue Bike Program. And we are working out partnerships with Uber and Lyft so people can have discounts in order to be able to get there. In terms of the number of spaces in aggregate, we've gone out and counted. There's a 225 spaces between the angle parking on both sides of the street as well as the municipal lot number 14, which is on Parkview, which is literally right around the corner, as well as the Mattapan Station, which is also a block, a block away. And there's 100 spaces there. And we are actually in talks with a couple of our neighbors to access additional spaces. And this is a very dense section, so I'm literally, I'm going to top-line these components. What I will note around the delivery of our products, these, as well as the transport, transport of our monies. There was no one in the world who is as motivated to make sure that we get this right. So one of the components around the delivery of product, we do want to note that we will not have individuals transporting products that have guns. That is actually not allowed in the state of Massachusetts. But these will either be Verdant employees or we're working, or working with state-certified vendors in this space. And we're actually looking to work with a diverse vendor to transport product to our facility. It will be prepackaged and the times will be randomized. Obviously, we don't want to have a situation where the truck shows up at 3 o'clock every single day and, and which would. and, and which would deal with issues of public safety. The vehicles will have GPS monitoring, and there will be at least two individuals in each vehicle. If you could go down a couple to the section that says Plan Four Transportation of Monies. And as, as noted, again, I, I am very motivated to ensure that the money leaves our facility and gets to Century Bank safely. So we are partnering with a company, a company that will have armored car. They will coordinate closely with Century Bank. We will follow nine thirty-five C M R five hundred dot one one zero, section seven. And there will be two registered agents employed by a licensed partner at all times when it comes to that procedure. And just in, in closing, again, I want to thank you, this board, who's actually creating history in, in our city, which will, I hope, help to bring us all closer and close the gap that we have relative to the, those, what those, what folks have in the, in the city. I, I close just as a reflection, paying honor to the land that we are talking about. It turns out that Mattapan was originally settled by the English in sixteen thirty. And it was actually originally part of Dorchester, which is one of the neighborhoods that I live in until nineteenth century, and then it was annexed into its own neighborhood. But most importantly, Mattapan, the name comes from the Napontet tribe. And they were the original inhabitants of Mattapan. And they, they were a tribe of Massachusetts Confederation of Native Americans. And interestingly, Mattapan means in, from the Napontet tribe, it means a good place to be or a good place to sit. And I, I just reflect on that with an African proverb. And it says, where you sit when you are old shows where you stood when you were a youth. And I would submit that as a youthful company, that Verdant Medical stands for an opportunity to access, to provide access to the cannabis industry for those who have been disproportionately affected by the war, the failed war on drugs. And it actually represents holding the door behind us for other Black, Latino, and Asian entrepreneurs who, who should rightfully be part of this multi-billion dollar industry and can break the chains of generational poverty and despair. And so with that, I will take any and all questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Before we move to questions from the board, I will ask Attorney Chila White to please testify regarding your certification as an equity applicant.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, commissioners. I was able to certify Mr. Jackson as a, as an equity applicant pursuant to section eight dash thirteen point three of the ordinance establishing equitable regulation of the cannabis industry in the city of Boston. Mr. Jackson, as he mentioned in his presentation, is the sole board member of Verdant Medical Incorporated and is also the one hundred percent beneficial interest holder of the entity, which exceeds the fifty-one percent threshold required by the ordinance. I was able to certify Mr. Jackson under the following three criteria. A person who has resided in an area of disproportionate impact, as defined by the Cannabis Control Commission for at least five of the past ten years. Mr. Jackson submitted his driver's license and a copy of his deed as proof of residency. He has owned Thirty-Seventh Dollar Street since March of two thousand and seven until the present. According to the geocoder address search tool used by the CCC to determine areas of disproportionate address, impact, Mr. Jackson's address was located in census tract number zero eight two one zero zero, which is designated by the CCC as an area of disproportionate impact. Mr. Jackson also qualified under the criteria of a person who has resided in the city of Boston for the past seven years. Again, Mr. Jackson submitted his deed, his driver's license, and also his voter registration certificate from the city of Boston Elections Department, which established that he has been a voter in Boston since September nineteen ninety-nine. And his last quote was in March of two thousand and twenty. And Mr. Jackson also qualified under the criteria of a person who is Black, African American, Hispanic, Latino, or of Asian descent. Mr. Jackson self-identified as Black.
Thank you, Attorney White. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for Attorney White regarding the certification?
No, thank you, Attorney White. I don't have any questions specifically about his equity certification. I do have, unless, I don't know if any of the other commissioners do at this point.
Commissioner Smith?
Hi, Mr. Jackson, thank you. So just a quick question about, you talked about the barriers or impediments to entry, and just wanted to know what your, a little bit more about what your approach was in terms of addressing those barriers? And how in this emerging, emerging industry, are you planning to sort of do this vertical integration you talked about with the thirty employees and help them develop?
So in terms of the, the barriers to entry, one of the components is we have a tendency to spend a great deal of money, as well as time on standard operating procedures, as well as consulting. That costs a lot of, a lot of money, tens of thousands of dollars. We look forward to having a cohort of individuals that we actually help monetarily, but also with getting through the application process. It is burdensome as well as very expensive, and that's critical. And so our objective is really to make sure that, you know, there are a couple of people of color who've moved forward so far. But we don't want to be the only ones. We want to make sure that prosperity is across the board. And what was the second part of, of your question?
I was asking about the vertical integration you talked about for the employees.
Yeah.
What are your plans in terms of training them, developing them?
Yeah, so in, in terms of the, the vertical integration, we actually have a host community agreement in a town called Rowley. And that's not in North Carolina, that's actually in, in Massachusetts. It's about forty miles north. We have eleven acres there. And the plan is to build a facility that will grow cannabis as well as process it. And so we will need additional employees on top of the retail side to be, to participate in that. That will open the doors of opportunity for management, as well as people to be cross-trained in, in many aspects of this industry. And so I think the other component that we really plan to work on is that of training and just the human capital that's involved so people can be successful at Verdant, but also in the industry as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Chairwoman Joyce, do you have additional questions for the applicant?
I do, thank you. Mr. Jackson, do you own that Rowley site? I'm just trying to get a little bit better understanding for the, the vertically integrated description you gave at the beginning. Is that something that your company owns or?
At, at this point, we have an L O I with, at, at that site. And the plan is to acquire the site. And we, we have a host community agreement for the cultivation facility, as well as another store on the site.
Okay.
Because it's eleven acres.
Do you contemplate at this site that we're talking about today, going medical in the future?
We, we, we think about that. The medical piece has been somewhat difficult. And I would, I would submit to you, Chairwoman Joyce, that the difficulty is, in the current medical program, you technically would need to grow. I, I would need to actually be growing it to be able to sell even a pre-roll at the facility. So that makes it somewhat onerous and difficult at this time. And so in, in the future, I would like to, to, to move forward with medical. I think the medical program is a really important program. But we would be going for recreational initially.
Okay. And do you contemplate partnering with a delivery service in the future? Was that anything that was discussed in the community meetings or what?
Yes, really interesting. So delivery didn't exist at that, at that point. But I, I do contemplate working with a delivery service. And obviously, that would be a social equity and/or a economic empowerment candidate because the, there's a, there's a two-year exclusion for everybody else. And I, I look forward to partnering with someone from, hopefully, the, the best thing Chairwoman Joyce would be possibly to partner with somebody who was from Roxbury, Dorchester, or Mattapan. And Mattapan would be really cool.
Okay. And my last question, I'll let everyone else have a chance to ask some questions. I'm always looking at this through the licensing lens. So can you just describe for the record the appropriateness for this type of license at this location and how it fits into the community? I know you touched upon parts of that, but I want to get all of that on the record for us.
Yeah, so we, we looked across the city as a whole. And the objective of putting it in actually Mattapan Square is that currently, and that this may change in the future, and there are many projects around the area. But there's currently not housing in Mattapan Square. It's a city center that is commercially based. It's also a city center that has a great deal of parking, as well as transportation, public transportation resources, public parking lots, as well as a new commuter rail station. And in addition, I think one of the other components that's critical, and I think this is across the city of Boston right now in this pandemic, you see many businesses going out of business. And I, I, we know that cannabis shops are a destination, and they, that they do bring people. And so the objective is to make sure that we are working with other businesses to cross-pollinate this, the city center as a destination, and not only a destination for cannabis, but also for people to eat, for people to shop, and for people to procure services in and around the Mattapan area. And the other component is to be able to use businesses that are, are local and to make sure that the dollars, that we have essentially a several-fold bottom line that not only is about the bottom line of, of Verdant Medical, but is also about the bottom line of businesses in the community around us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Sankeyan?
Hi, I do, thank you so much. Thank you, Tito. I want to first say that I appreciate throughout your presentation and the commitment to criminal justice reform, to reparations. I think, you know, the whole reason, one of the whole reasons for this board is to make sure that those most negatively impacted are the ones that are benefiting from, from change in policy and that those who were negatively impacted by such public policy are able to have the same opportunity. So I personally really appreciate the commitment to quarry individuals and those who, who might have someone who's quarried in their family. Because as we all know, that is a, is a huge impact. I did have a specific question about the Creating Reparations Fund. Or do you plan on doing a separate nonprofit entity for that fund? Who decides? Is that, is that like a forgivable loan? Is it a, you know, a straight-up grant? And is it only available to those in Mattapan? Or is it anyone who falls within the, the category that you listed?
Yeah, so in terms of, thank you, Commissioner Sankeyan. And, and again, thank you for your, your service to our city and, and kind of all of these areas. In terms of the reparations fund, I, I actually have a nonprofit that I've used for, for years to help folks out in the community. That's one of the possible ways to do it. The objective is actually not to have folks pay us back. The objective is for, we, we will make enough money to be able to put at least fifty thousand dollars a year into this fund and to use it essentially as microfinance for individuals to be able to start their own businesses. And then, you know, the other part of the fund is for classes. So we want to have entrepreneurship courses that individuals are, are able to go through. And if we are able to get parts of that gratis, that, that fifty K could actually move, move up. We, again, what I found in this industry is access to capital has been so difficult because banks, first off, banks often don't give people of color loans when they have good credit and they make a lot of money. But on top of that, definitely not in the cannabis industry because of the federal component. Commissioner Sankeyan, there was another question that you asked that I think I might have blown past.
Can I just interrupt for a second before you start? Could the people stop commenting? I'm having a hard time following the testimony because the comments keep popping up. We're asking people not to use the chat box for comments. I can listen to the presenter and the commissioners ask their questions. Thank you.
The second question was just who was eligible? Is it, is it going to be a residency? Or is it just, you know, anyone who falls within the?
Yeah, we can, we can determine that. Obviously, I want to give a preference to those individuals in, in Mattapan. But if there are individuals who come from these backgrounds, we, we, we know how difficult the issue of housing is across the city. So again, we would want to, we prefer those individuals in front, to be in the front of line, be from Mattapan. But individuals who, who have these backgrounds, we want to give them the opportunity to participate with Lawrence and the city. Thank you, Commissioner Sankeyan.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lambos. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do, thank you. And thanks so much, Counselor, I mean, Tito, I mean, Mr. Jackson, for making sure that, at the outset, saying that diversity and inclusion was not just a separate plan, but obviously deeply throughout all of your, all of the plans. So I want to thank you for that. That is definitely a sentiment that I think this board was created for that. And I do have some questions about employees, unsurprisingly. So I just wanted to have you talk a little bit more about your thoughts or in your plans around worker voice, around how you plan to support people being able to give feedback within your employees. Can you share a little bit more about that for me?
Yeah, definitely. So we don't currently, the, the definition of D Corp is not actually something that's used in, in cannabis. But we want to essentially use those policies in order for, one, individuals to be connected to management, understanding kind of the openness in, in terms of books. But the, the issues around harassment, as, as, as well as voice, are critical to me. So we actually plan on starting our own ERGs from day one. So people have support groups that are already aligned with, you know, in, in any ethnic or other, other, other group. In addition, it is very, very important that we have, that our, our workers have an opportunity to direct any of the issues that they may have with management or, and/or with customers and, and get those resolved. And the objective is to be as transparent as possible in those, in, in that process. So we want to be best in class in the manner in which we treat and include our workers. In addition, this actually goes to promotions. We want to make sure that we see a diversity of folk promoted, in particular, women and people of color being able to move up the food chain.
Um, a couple more questions. Would you be opposed to having your workers organized into a union?
Uh, no, that's up, that's up to them, um, but I would, I would not, uh, be opposed.
And, uh, just, uh, another question about the, um, it's, uh, you've taken great care of, um, providing livable wages, going above and beyond the Boston, um, living wage policy, providing benefits and, um, and, uh, 401K. Had a question about the MBE contractors that you plan to work with. Um, is your expectation that they also will have those same, um, standards that you've set for your own company?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's what, what, what our objective is, uh, to partner with vendors, um, that carry the same, uh, values. Um, and, and listen, Commissioner Lamboz, I, you, you, on a regular basis, have, actually on before you now, you've come before me, uh, uh, around, uh, these issues. Um, the, the biggest issue here is, there's enough money on the table to pay folk what they're worth and to take care of people, uh, when it comes to, uh, to cannabis. We, we, it's a P and L business, right? So you do have to, uh, deal with, um, the, the cost that you have. Um, but the other part of this, and I'll be very frank, is that, um, when you don't treat people well in this space, um, you actually put yourself in a great deal of jeopardy for a whole host of reasons, um, including, um, the fact that we are, we are track seed to sale. We can't lose anything. And I want to make sure that everyone is actually doing well. Um, in addition, we actually put forward, um, a fund to, to deal with issues around housing, uh, because we know that will definitely, uh, uh, become, uh, an issue. And we're being proactive in that space. So, um, it's, it's a commitment, uh, that, that I have had for a long period of time and translates in, into the transition from my, uh, uh, public life into my private life.
Great, thank you. Just one more last question, just can you tell us a little bit more about this, um, setup program that you've got? And is this, uh, is your intention that this is going to be a certified training, apprenticeship program? Or how are you thinking about that training?
Um, the, the, uh, yeah, and I use the apprentice word, so that, uh, I, I don't, um, in terms of the certification, you, I would actually probably need to, uh, come to you and, and ask you what that certification means. The objective really is, uh, to make sure, um, that people have, um, the, the Building Pathways Program is a really cool program in that, um, it gives people the, uh, soft skills as well as hard skills to get into the trades. Um, we are, are, are building our own pathway into the cannabis industry. And so analogous to the Building Pathways, uh, program, um, it would be, um, some classroom components. Um, I, uh, difficult in the cannabis industry, um, is that, uh, you can't actually bring an individual into, uh, your facility behind the, uh, the desk, uh, without identification. Um, and so we would actually have to, uh, you know, uh, work around, uh, that. But when it comes down to it, the objective is to be, give people, uh, the retail experience, uh, the experience to be in a cultivation facility, and the experience to be in, uh, a facility where we are going to be, uh, processing slash manufacturing cannabis. Um, so that, that's, that's our objective with the setup program. And, uh, uh, Counselor Arroyo was emphatic, uh, that, um, we not only, uh, helped individuals start their own businesses, but gave people employment opportunities and getting into, uh, the, the industry. He was, um, uh, a, a little more than clear on, on, on that.
Great, thank you so much. I do, again, want to say how much, um, I appreciate your level of depth and thoughtfulness of incorporating diversity and inclusion in all aspects of your application. Um, you set a really high bar. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Lamboz.
And Commissioner Holmes, certainly, last but certainly not least, does the order you're appearing in, in the screen in front of me? Do you have a question for the applicant? Oh, I believe you're muted.
I, I did, I just unmuted myself. I'm new to all this technology. Well, hello, Mr. Jackson, it's wonderful to see you.
How you doing Superintendent, uh, slash Commissioner?
Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Um, first of all, I'm really, I really like your community contract, um, emphasis. But kind of surrounding that, just two, two kind of small questions. As far as a community contract, how do you plan to monitor the area on the outside so that we don't have young people waiting for somebody to purchase for them? And, uh, we don't have loitering? And probably piggybacking and cousin to that, in order to maybe not have that issue with queuing, have you, um, considered, uh, reservations, online reservations and pickup? So you don't have lines outside?
Yes, um, so the se- second question, um, we, uh, are definitely, um, going to have online, uh, res- reservations, uh, relative to, uh, being able to order, uh, prior to, uh, to coming. Um, that actually is, um, makes it, uh, much, much easier, and that's a, really a best practice. Um, and in terms of, um, and we'll work with the police department, um, around, um, that, that first week, um, of, of opening, um, relative to, um, you know, the thoughts around, um, either appointment-only, um, or, um, you know, kind of having, uh, a, a timeframe for individuals, uh, to, uh, to come. Uh, as, as, as noted, um, prior to 1630, uh, the Napansett Tribe was saying, uh, Mattapan should be a good place to be. Um, I, I, I'm from Boston, and I, I want Mattapan to continue to be a good place, and, and, and I believe it's a, a great pa- place to be. Um, in terms of your, your first question, um, we will have at all times security outside, um, that will not allow individuals, um, to, uh, loiter, uh, litter, or light up. Um, in, in fact, uh, 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 an ironic fact about cannabis, um, uh, nationally, there's usually a, uh, 10 to 12% decrease in crime, uh, around a dispensary. Um, why does that happen? Um, typically, we hire, and the people that we're speaking to are ex-law enforcement. And not saying that you are not, uh, re- very cool to hang out with, uh, Commissioner Holmes, um, but those individuals, uh, typically don't, uh, want to, uh, to hang out with you while you're, uh, on a job with, you know, with a contract such as that. And so, um, that is a critical component. And I would also say, it's also selfish. Um, that does not help our business, um, if there are individuals, uh, hang, hanging around. It actually, uh, is harmful, um, to, to our actual business. Um, so that's a, a critical component.
And, um, just, i- if someone is in violation of this community contract, um, I think I heard you say that they will no longer be able to, um, use your establishment. They will be, is that, is that true? They'll be, they'll be barred from your establishment?
Yes, um, yeah, as, as noted, we, we actually have had, uh, contact with, with the police department. Um, you know, we, we truly appreciate, uh, the, uh, community service officers who on a regular basis go out, um, into the community, and there, there are reports that are obviously generated. And we want to make sure that those individuals who, uh, violate our policy are, uh, no longer, um, uh, you know, in a business relationship, uh, with us. It's, it's, there's a responsibility that people have, uh, when coming to, uh, the community, um, to respect the community, um, and to, to leave it, uh, as they, uh, they found it. Um, so we are, it's absolutely unacceptable. And I'll just be very real, it's not, I, I just don't want that business, um, even if it were, uh, profitable. It's just simply not the type of business, um, that, that I want. Um, I've seen folk come into communities and take advantage of it too many times. Um, and that's not what, uh, will be acceptable in our company.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
And if none of, if the Chairwoman or none of the other commissioners have additional questions, I will move to public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to testify in support, who is here as an elected official or representing an elected official?
Hi, I'm here, uh, Whitney.
Hi, Rudy, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Whitney Paulson, I'm with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, we've held the statement dated public meeting for Burditt Medical. Excuse me, I'm closing my mic on this one. Um, we have this meeting on January 17th, uh, 2020, at the Mildred Ave Community Center. And we'd like to go on the record and so.
Whitney, what was the date of the community meeting? I'm sorry, you cut out.
January 17th, 2020, at the Mildred Ave Community Center.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm not seeing anyone else, uh, who is an elected official or representing an elected official. So we will turn to the individuals who specifically requested to testify. Please unmute yourself. Calling, and please, uh, limit your testimony to this specific application at this specific location. State your name, address, and affiliation, if any. Calling, Glennola Mitchell.
Good afternoon. Um, um, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, first I have to say, Ruthne, uh, I think your report is not incorrect because I was at that meeting. Uh, and, um, there were, sure, there were people who were there to support it, and what we overwhelmingly found out is, they weren't really residents of Mattapan's. They came from Dorchesters and surrounding areas. So, uh, wholeheartedly, the Mattapan community has not stood 100% behind this. And as I sit in the community, as a community activist and leader, as well as the Chair of the Mattapan Community Health Center Board, uh, we have voiced our opinion at that meeting as we're not in support of it. Particularly, it does not, uh, coincide well as we believe with the health benefits that the Health Center is, is, is delivering, uh, to the community. Um, and that, uh, it poses a challenge for individuals who are, uh, coming, uh, for services, uh, to combat addiction. And yet, you're, uh, once again, trying to put, uh, two doors down from the Health Center, um, which to me is really counterproductive to what the Health Center is doing. Additionally, uh, when you talk about, uh, the traffic in the community, it's going to be a nightmare because all of the parking spaces that, um, uh, Tito has said is available are not available. As we all know, the MBTA parking lot is going to be changed into residential property. So that, the parking pattern there is going to change. It is also forecast that, I understand, uh, that there's also a, a possibility that even the parking lot that, uh, abuts the post office and is across from the MBTA parking lot, uh, may also become residential, uh, setting as well. So your tra- your parking spaces are, are narrowing, uh, greatly. Um, we just, in this community, we are not, uh, um, willing to be the guinea pigs once again, or shall we say, the dumping ground once again. And, and Tito, if you feel that I'm abrupt, I am, because it's very sensitive to me, uh, because I have been in this community for 40, uh, well, 50 years now, this month. So, uh, um, I'm a longtime resident, longtime activist, uh, a participant in the community. So I, I have the true vein impulse of the community. Um, the, it, you know, um, I, to bring it to Mattapan community, uh, is, is one thing, but, a- and, and I applaud your right and respect your right to be a business owner. However, uh, as I state, uh, to bring it two doors down from the Health Center is just, is just not a, um, uh, co- uh, a real, uh, business entity that we would like to see in that location.
Thank you, Glennola.
Ms. Mitchell, uh, could you just please state your address for the record?
All right, it's 18 Southmere Road, Mattapan.
Yeah? Oh, I called it wrong, nevermind, go back.
Thank you, and I know, uh, Ruthne, for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services has also asked, uh, just to add to her previous statement.
And this is Whitney again, from the Office of Neighborhood Services. I do want to clarify that when I speak, I speak on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, not on behalf of Mattapan. Our role is to conduct the neighborhood process, uh, neighborhood engagement process and collect your feedback. Throughout that process, we do strictly advise people to write in their comments, and we give those instructions.
Yep.
Thing, so I do want to clarify that when I, from, um, the Office of the Mayor and the Office of Neighborhood Services. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would ask anybody who has not muted themselves to please mute yourselves. Calling Sharon Calendar. Is Sharon Calendar present?
Hey, thank you. Um, as mentioned, my name is Sharon Calendar. I'm a nurse and the Director of Family and Community Health Services at Mattapan Community Health Center, where I've worked since October 2000. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and voice our concern as a health center regarding the marijuana dispensary on Blue Hill Avenue, which is a stone's throw away from the front door of the Health Center, which is located at 1575 Blue Hill Avenue. Mattapan Community Health Center has been in this community since 1972. That is 48 years of being committed to our mission of improving the health and wellbeing of diverse populations in Mattapan and surrounding communities by providing exceptional primary care, preventive health services, and social services. Mr. Jackson, Tito, I understand and respect the work you are doing to ensure that blacks are part of the equity, inclusion, and diversity of the legal cannabis marketplace. As a nurse, I understand the health benefits that medical marijuana can have for individuals with certain health conditions. However, with that being said, as a health center located centrally in Mattapan Square, we have some real concerns about your dispensary being two doors down from us. As mentioned by our Board Chair, Glennola Mitchell, we have patients that come to the Health Center to receive behavioral health services. We have patients that come to the Health Center to receive, um, services to deal with their drug use and drug abuse. This shop is too close to the Health Center. In this Health Center, we provide preventive and restorative care for those individuals that are trying to get through their drug abuse and their drug use. Environmentally, as was mentioned, the concern about the real added value to the shop, really, will it bring any added concern or any positive value to Mattapan in general, and to the Mattapan Square area specifically? Parking is currently very limited. As was noted, it won't just be Mattapan residents coming into the square, which is already very congested. You stand at the square around four o'clock, even though, um, we are in a pandemic and there's not as much traffic in the square, it's still congested. Parking spaces are very limited in the square. It is for these reasons and many more already mentioned by our Board Chair that we feel that our mission, our vision, and our values cannot support the opening of a marijuana dispensary on Blue Hill Avenue, uh, which is too close to our Health Center. And, uh, we need to be able to make sure that our patients and our clients are able to come in to get the care that they need and not be challenged the minute they walk out their door for a marijuana shop that is too close to the Health Center. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and Ms. Calendar, could you just please state your address for the record?
Sure, Sharon Calendar, spelled C-A-L-L-E-N-D-E-R, Mattapan Community Health Center, 1575 Blue Hill Avenue, Mattapan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling Nadia Ducran.
Hi. Um, my name's Nadia Ducran, I'm actually a resident of Mattapan. I, uh, live on 25 Topalian Street. Um, literally walk-in distance from Mattapan Square, just about a block away. Um, I'm pretty new to the area. I mean, 2016 is when we bought our home and we moved here. Um, I've seen the area go from terrible to better, um, very quickly. And it's because of the community center, it's because of the, um, community in general, um, coming together and having sidewalks put in, uh, new businesses have been opened. Um, and I honestly think that this would be good for our community. Um, like Tito mentioned, um, it's going to bring business in, not only for his dispensary, but for other businesses in the area. Mattapan Square in general have, I've seen businesses open and closed, uh, open and close. And it's because there's no one coming in to service those businesses, but now there will be. Um, yeah, I know that the parking situation may be, and maybe it sucks, I get it. But there, like he mentioned, there are parking lots nearby. There's also the bus station that's walk-in distance, the shuttle that is, again, walk-in distance. Um, the commuter rail is being built. Um, I believe they're working on it now. Uh, I haven't really been out in, in the pandemic to see how far they've come along, but that is something that they're working on as well. Um, so again, and the crime rate, the crime rate I've seen, it's getting better. Um, it could be the pandemic that no one's really out. But again, like he mentioned, out. But again, like he mentioned, there's going, there are going to be a drop in the crime rate because because of what's going to happen if this is approved. So I look forward to it. That's just me as a as a resident. My street, I see, you know, I've seen it get better and I look forward to it getting getting better with a business like this opening up and bringing more opportunity to the to the city.
Thank you. Calling Robert Jenkins. And again, please state your address for the record. I see, Robert, you are muted. There we go.
Yes. 59 Elmont Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
59 Elmont Street, 52-year resident of Matapan Community Activist. I would like to say I am for this project for a number of reasons. Being a 52-year resident of Matapan Square, I have seen the changes in Matapan Square. Matapan Square lacks minority business. You know, minority-owned business is coming in to own a building. That has not happened in Matapan to my knowledge. All right. Number two, most importantly, it would bring revenue to not only verdant medical, but to all the other businesses. You mean to tell me that there is a marijuana dispensary on Blue Hill Ave? Blue Hill Ave? There's a marijuana, not Blue Hill, uh, Blue Hill Ave, there's a marijuana dispensary that is bringing all type of clientele from all over the city in the state. And that is a very busy intersection with no park. All right. So in Matapan Square, it's always been problems with parks. But businesses, a lot of businesses still thrive and strive there. So parking is going to be an issue anyway. Being, I am also a member and I use the Matapan Community Health Center. I understand that it's close to the health center, but maybe there could be a partnership there in some way to talk about the perils of marijuana, you know, working together. Matapan has been a place where there are folks that have mental issues, social issues there. It's again, the village raising the village. But again, looking at the opportunity of a minority-owned business and supporting that minority-owned business is key. Like I get I'm gonna go back to parking. I live on Elmont Street. It may be a little off key, but I'll say this. Every Sunday, we have close to 2,000 to 3,000 people who are playing soccer, who are out there during this pandemic and not using masks. Okay, that's something that I'm going to work on with my neighbors and other folks to help out. But again, when you say the perils, when you when you're predicting what's going to happen, but here's the most, I'll give you a number. 69% of the Matapan residents voted for the legalization of legalizing marijuana. You got to remember that. That's a big number. That's 69 people that want it. 69% that wants that. And there's another, there have been a number of other marijuana dispensaries that have put in proposals. I'm not going to go into detail, but they're also in, they're in a more congested community area. This is in the business area. It can be something that can be worked out. But again, parking is going to get worse with all the projects. Yes, they are. And that's something that Matapan has been able to adapt to like other neighborhoods. Again, I am for this project. Well, you know, bring it in, bringing in the expertise that Tito has brought, you know, in the pharmaceuticals. I mean, it's something that could, we could stray and be, you know, getting our youth involved in. So again, I'm gonna say loud and clear, I am for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now turn to the individuals who've requested to testify in the chat. I would respectfully ask that if you are repeating a sentiment that has previously been expressed, please state that and keep your comments as brief as possible, just in order to respect everyone's time and ensure that all interested individuals have the opportunity to testify. That calling Guale Valdez. If you could please state your address for the record.
It's 1575 Blue Hill Avenue, Matapan. And thank you to the Boston Cannabis Board for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm intentionally keeping my camera off because I am on vacation and I thought it was more important for my voice to be heard than for me to make an actual appearance on camera. So I hope it is not considered disrespectful. I've attended a lot of these community meetings, attended, I believe, every one of these community meetings. And I've heard the concern that is expressed at these meetings. And I used a phrase very early on, and I'm going to use a phrase again, which is respectful distance. All we're asking for by the health center, and has been expressed by Glenola Mitchell and Sharon Callender, is based on the services that we offer. And I won't repeat those services. But what we're asking for is just a respectful distance be maintained from the health center. And we do not feel that next door is a respectful distance. There are distancing requirements for schools. There's distancing requirements for churches. Treatment programs were not part of that list. So it is up to it is up to us to determine what is a socially responsible distance. And I would defer to the board. I would defer to those who have more expertise in this area than than myself. But we fight for access for our patients every single day. And any change in the traffic patterns, and we're already experiencing those challenges, where our parking lot gets blocked off due to those traffic patterns. Our parking lot, we struggle to to make sure that only our patients and only the customers of our tenants use it. We struggle with that every day. This will make it worse. If we see any change in the access to our patients, even a 10% drop in that access would have a disastrous impact on the health center. It would have an impact on our tenants and we rely on the tenants and the rent that they pay to keep us afloat. We are fighting for our survival as many health centers across the state, across the city, across the country are doing. And we are, that is one of our main concerns, is a restriction to access. When I brought this point up about our parking lot getting blocked, and it gets blocked now every day, twice a day, Blue Hill Avenue is the gateway in and out of this section of the city. When I had brought this concern up before, what I was told is call Boston Police Department, have them come out and clear the intersection. We would prefer not to use police resources for traffic control. So so once again, the term that I would use for for the work that we do, for the programs that we offer, our OBOC programs, office-based addiction treatment programs, and for the 10,000 patients that we serve for for access, I would, and once again, I won't repeat what Glenola Mitchell, our board chair, and Sharon Callender have already said, and just leave it that what we are asking for is just a respectful distance be maintained out of respect for the health center. Those are my comments. And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you very much. Calling Gabriel Camacho. Please state your name and address. Is Gabriel present?
Sam.
Good afternoon, Chairman Joyce, members of the board. My name is Gabriel Camacho. I reside at 243 Boylston Street in Watertown. I am the political and organizing director of United Food and Commercial Workers Local 1445. We represent tens of thousands of workers in meatpacking, warehousing, retail, healthcare, industrial laundries, and now in the cannabis industry. I was very heartened to hear Mr. Jackson's answer to board member Lumbos' question on on unionization of the workforce. Our local has a commitment to racial diversity and equity. Indeed, many of our members and and places where our members reside are in gateway cities as well as underserved communities. And the top leadership, elected leadership of our local are people of color and immigrants. So so we are encouraged that an equity applicant is making a strong economic plan. But we also believe strongly that the way to worker empowerment is by unionization with an enforceable collective bargaining agreement that is democratically ratified by its members. So my question to Mr. Jackson, who I want to reintroduce myself. I remember you from city council in Boston, and we worked on many immigration-related issues. And thank you very much for all those efforts. Mr. Jackson, are you willing to enter into a labor peace agreement with Local 1445, which simply states that you will, that the company will stay neutral as opposed to many outside companies with with much access to capital, which hire union-busting law firms and consultants and attack employees' rights to organize? It's a simple random of agreement, Mr. Jackson. That is my question.
And I believe once we take testimony, the applicant will have a brief moment to respond to any questions or comments that were posed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, just one moment. I'm just catching up to make sure I've gotten everyone in the chat because I believe, I'm sorry, calling Fatima Ali Salam.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Fatima Ali Salam. I'm the chair for the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council. Good afternoon, Mr. Jackson. Thank you for all the praises of Greater Matapan. Yes, Matapan is a good place to be, and Greater Matapan just keeps getting better, as we say. My question, the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council is not at the moment going to make a consideration of support or opposition of any dispensary. The main reason being that we have a number of dispensaries proposals in front of us who wish for our support, and we'll do so in writing. But one question that myself and others are, do have, is in particular to Matapan, and it has to do with the ability of individual investors who live in Matapan to have the right to invest in your company, and what would that look like?
And again, the applicant will have the opportunity to respond. I do want to note that any license issued by this board is nontransferable, including direct or indirect beneficial interests. And with that, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application who has not previously testified? That I will ask Mr. Jackson if he wants to make a brief statement.
Thank you to the the board. Thank you to all of the community members who have spoken in favor as well as those who have raised concerns. We, it is my plan, if we receive this designation, to continue to work with folks. In terms of the on the labor front, I have had a longstanding relationship with labor. And it began with my father, Herb Jackson, who fought so hard to make sure that people who looked like me got into the union. And he always told me that a union job was a good job. So my dad's not here to whoop my behind, but you know, there's, it's, there's not, you know, any, there's no real question here as to whether or not I'll meet with UFCW and figure out, you know, this this component with them. We want to make sure that people have are taken care of. And in all honesty, I hope that the things that we're putting forward are absolutely in line. And it's not, and it's not really a big difference because there is enough resource resources on the table to make sure that people, not only me, my family, but the people who work for us have opportunity to do better for themselves as well as their family. And that's what this is all about. In terms of the question that Madam President, Fatima Ali Salam, we are very interested in local investment and look forward to providing opportunities for individuals from our community to have opportunities to invest either debt, equity, convertible debt throughout this space. I think having, giving people not only opportunities to work, but actually to have their money work for them is a critical component. And that should be employed in the cannabis industry. And I think the only question, and I probably will take this offline, is to determine from the board if there were additional investment as the Madam President brought up earlier, would there be an opportunity to take additional investment from those individuals who are from from the community? Because I think that that several fold bottom line is exactly the type of wealth building that we're looking at. Overarching, I would respectfully ask for approval from the board. We've been at this for about about two years and some change. And, you know, our company has gone through pretty much every hurdle, pothole, snare, and trap in this space. I am very lucky to be able to be the sole board member. I'm also very lucky that when we get granted conversion from nonprofit to for-profit to have the equity flow over to me at this point. And so I really want to be able to have the opportunity to open our doors, to hire people, and to partner with businesses in and around this amazing neighborhood of Matapan and our community. Again, I respectfully ask for the support of the the board and the board members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present before you today.
And the last individual who was requested to testify is Mr. Chauncey Spencer. And again, I would, I would ask you to be brief, and we will then take a brief recess before the next item. Mr. Spencer, could you please state your address?
My address is 53 Rosson Street. Can you hear me correctly?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My question is not in support or or against. I have to remain neutral. But this is about a particular issue in regards to the equity designation given to the applicant. I understand that it technically falls within the realm of equity applicant. But at the same time, I understand that the business as it stands right now is a nonprofit. So nonprofit structures, if I remember correctly, cannot actually have ownership. But maybe I could be wrong. Anyhow, nonetheless, just as equity designation itself is a slap in the face to those of us who have been affected by the war on drugs and have are trying to actually get into this industry. It is, we cannot possibly expect our businesses to look similar to to out-of-state, you know, large corporation backed by millions of dollars and to come into the come before the board and expect our applications to look as if they are corporate-level institutions. That is certainly just, it's a slap in the face of the intentions of the law. The law, if I understand correctly, was to affect, was to require the inclusion, mandate inclusion of people who have been affected by the war on drugs. And I'm not saying that we aren't capable of doing that, but it pushes us to a critical direction where we have to partner with larger corporations, thus in meeting our equity positions because we cannot receive outside funding, or we cannot usually receive that type of institutional lending. But with that said, I just want to say that these types of equity applicants are a problem to the industry of itself. Those particularly, those are who are politically connected and have city councils as their attorneys and are city councilors or state reps or what have you. This is a problem. And I think that the the board needs to take this under consideration for the remaining applicants that move forward and not expect them to be as corporate-level, you know, institutions as as this is. So when you do consider all the others going forward, please do take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spencer. The board will take all of this information under advisement. If any individuals wish to make additional comments, they can email those to cannabisboard@boston.gov. This will be discussed and voted on at the board's voting meeting this coming a week from today, which will also be open to the public, but at which no additional testimony will be accepted. And before we move on to our second agenda item, we will take a brief three- to five-minute recess. minute recess.
We have a three minute break. I'm gonna get something in there.
I would go on mute.
Three minute break. Three minute break before we present. Watch it. Watch it. This was the each person presented is supposed to be 10 to 15 minutes. This person just went for 55 minutes. And we were supposed to be number one now and number two. Let the social equity group go first.
Mr. Cooney, you might want to mute yourself.
Thank you for everyone's patience. Once the other commissioners are back, we will begin with item two. Right, thank you all. Returning to the agenda. As a reminder, the terms and conditions, including in the granting of any license by the Boston Cannabis Board, will be specifically incorporated into any host community agreement that is subsequently negotiated. The HCA is not a separate negotiation, but rather memorializes the discussions that occur in the community, the presentation before this board at any grant of a license by the board. While the board is not the legal entity that executes the host community agreement with an approved licensee, all terms and conditions will be memorialized. Calling Patriot Care Corp., the holder of an operational medical cannabis dispensary license has applied for recreational cannabis, recreational cannabis retail license to be co-located at 21 Milk Street in downtown Boston. The applicant is a non-equity applicant. The applicant contact is Larry DeCarra. As a reminder, the applicant has provided material certifying that it is a publicly traded Canadian company and as such, the disclosures of direct and indirect beneficial interest holders is limited to the two principles of the ultimate beneficial interest holder. The applicant has also submitted an affidavit regarding the same.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lawrence S. DeCarra, home address 111 Perkins Street, Jamaica Plain. I maintain an office at 10 PO Square in downtown Boston and I'm appearing in this first round of applications before this new board and doing so remotely. I've reviewed the ordinance, the rules and regulations, and will explain why we satisfy the established criteria. And then we'll present Bob Mayerson, a founding member, vice president and current member of Patriot Care, current board member, Patriot Care, who will review the slides which Leslie has now placed on the screen, introduce other members of our team and be available to respond to questions. Also on the call, our attorney Mary Miller, our general counsel, and Nellie Rivera, our manager. We submitted the application requirements pursuant to 813.6. We held a community meeting in September 2019. We have established a solid working relationship with Councilor Flynn, who sent a letter of support, which we provided to the board. The downtown Boston Bid Board voted to not oppose this application. I believe that Councilor Sansone, the president of the board, is on the call. We've met numerous times with many of others and secured letters of support, which will be scanned to the board well in advance of next Wednesday's meeting. We're obviously prepared to negotiate a host community agreement as was referenced by the executive secretary. I think we satisfy all the requirements of the ordinance. Also, in response to the regulations, we have an executed lease. We're an existing operator of a medical facility. We've disclosed, as Ms. Hawkins has stated, as required by law. We will update the securities and operation plan, the certificate of occupancy, the fire assembly permit and all other requirements pursuant to 3.00 of the regulations as well as 3.06, which calls for an approved floor plan. If circumstances permit in the future, we would welcome the members of the board to visit 21 Milk Street. They've been in operation for a number of years. The slides which Bob Mayerson will review are very clear. They show transit proximity. I believe the transit score for this location is probably 100. We are within walking distance of every single major MBTA line that there is. There's extraordinary parking availability within a few, a few minute walk. And this is a proven operator in a location which is more than appropriate and adequate for these purposes. And we've had no issues with respect to public safety, developed a great relationship with Captain Fong, who just recently retired. We believe we're good citizens and we're certainly able to proceed as soon as all the approvals are in place. Bob will now go through these slides, review our commitment to diversity and inclusion and to the employment of a diverse workforce and our entire team will be available to respond to any questions the members of the board might have. Bob?
Thank, thank you, Larry, and thank you, members of the Boston Cannabis Board. As Larry said, I'm one of the founding members of Patriot Care, Vice President and a current member of the Patriot Care Board. I have led the build out and startup of all of our operations in Massachusetts since we first began this journey seven years ago. For those of you, well, and also I want, Larry did introduce two other members who are on the call, who are on, on this to help answer questions later if needed. Nellie Rivera is our general manager of the 21 Milk Street. She's been the general manager for the last three years, three of the four years we've been open there. And any good reputation we have there is a function of her and the work that she and her team have done. Mary Alice Miller, our Chief Risk Officer and General Counsel for Columbia Care, our parent company, is also on. Mary's been with us as well for, for about three years at this point. For those of you who are not familiar with Patriot Care on the board, I just wanted to give you a quick, a quick sketch. We were one of the first groups, we were in the first group of licensees for the medical program back in, that were awarded back in 2014. We operate this medical facility in Boston. We have, we have a dispensary in Lowell, Massachusetts, and we have one as well in Greenfield. The Lowell and Greenfield facilities are, have already been approved and we've been for adult use co-location. We've been operating in Lowell for about 18 months on a co-located basis and we've been operating in Greenfield for about 15 months co-located. We are a vertical operation, so we do produce most of our own product, but we also do purchase a fair bit of product on a wholesale basis from, from others. Patriot Care is a wholly owned subsidiary of Columbia Care. Columbia Care is one of the largest and most experienced cultivators, manufacturer and provider of medical and adult use cannabis products with licenses in 18 US jurisdictions and the EU. Importantly, you know, we operate in a, in a number of other large urban areas like, like Boston, so New York City, Washington DC, Chicago, San Diego, and we have quite a bit of experience in that regard. Leslie, you can stay on this slide for right now and then, and then I'll, I'll tell you when to move to the next one. As Larry said, you know, when we, when we think about the criteria that, that you're, you're scoring us against, we, we have a lot to point to and, you know, mainly that we can point to our actual performance on, on many of the metrics in terms of how we've actually done over the last four years since we opened at 21 Milk Street. In terms of, and I'll provide more, more detail on these after this, this slide here, but in terms of diversity and inclusion, we're very proud of our actual diversity hiring record at 21 Milk Street and the things we've done to demonstrate our commitment to inclusion and social equity. On the employment plan, you know, we see nothing that will change in that focus going forward and we're going to maintain the same attributes and we're going to give preference to qualified candidates from Boston and I'll talk more about that in a sec, second. In terms of community engagement and feedback, we, this is something we've been doing for, you know, since long before we got our open in, at, you know, in 2016. We've met regularly with the neighborhood groups. We have been an involved member of the community since before we opened and I'll tell you more about that. In terms of location, safety and security, as Larry said, we have an excellent demonstrated track record at 21 Milk Street in terms of impact on the community, you know, no negative impact on the community in terms of safety and security for our patients and patrons. Transportation and parking, as Larry said, we are, 21 Milk Street is ideally suited for access without disruption to the nearby neighborhood and I'll take, take you through what our, what our plans are with respect to how we do handle product deliveries in cash. You can switch to the next slide, Leslie. So our goal in terms of our, you know, our diversity goal for the company is to hire qualified work, a qualified workforce that reflects the racial, cultural and ethnic composition of the communities that we serve. And when I look at where we are today at 21 Milk Street, we're very proud of our record. This has been fairly consistent. These, these numbers you see here have been fairly consistent over the entire four years we've been operating. You know, over 60% now, of, over 60% of our staff right now are people of color and over 50% are women. You know, we've hovered around those numbers, you know, on various sides of that number for the last four years. In terms of, in terms of our commitment to social equity, about two and a half years ago, we, we created and developed a curriculum, an educational program that was targeted to, to help social equity applicants primarily, people who are looking to either get into the business as owners or what we found is that many people wanted to just figure out how to get into the business. And so we developed the curriculum. We've, we've run this curriculum now successfully for over two years. We've done it at Bunker Hill Community College, Greenfield Community College and Cape Cod Community College. We've committed quite a bit of our executive time to this and we love doing it. It's, it's, it's really something we enjoy doing because we feel like we can help people avoid some of the pitfalls and, and things that we learn from. We've had over 200 students have attended and we, and we've committed over 100, we've already spent over 144 hours of executive time teaching the courses. In terms of our employment plan, there's no, it's, let's just stay on that slide there for a second. Actually, Leslie, sorry. Our employment plan is to see us doing more of what we've done in the case of actually hiring for, if we assume, assuming we get the, the permission and to do adult use at this location, we plan to hire 20 to 30 new people. In order to fill those jobs, we're going to have probably at least two job fairs in Boston. We will give preference to qualified Boston, Boston residents. In terms of how we have operated and we will continue to operate, you know, we, we, we think we set the pace on this. We've been offering very competitive wages from the get-go, very competitive wages and benefits, including paid time off. On the wage side, we start, our starting wage is in excess of 16, 16.50 an hour is, is the starting wage for us. And our average staff salary right now, I'm sorry, our average staff hourly rate right now is over $18 an hour. To just preempt the question that'll come later, we, five years ago, we signed a labor peace agreement with 1199 SCIU and we, that, that agreement is still in effect today. In terms of the, the benefits, you know, all full-time employees get, are offered health benefits. All employees, whether part-time or full-time, have the opportunity to accrue paid time off. It's just they accrue at different, at different rates. Okay, now you can go to the next slide. Thank you. In terms of community support and engagement, we meet, we meet and have met regularly with elected officials, with Rosemary Sansone of the Bid and her staff, with the Midtown Park Plaza Neighborhood Association. We've had annual community meetings as required by our medical license. And the goal in all these is to maintain a dialogue and to ensure that we're meeting everyone, meeting or exceeding everyone's expectations. As Larry indicated- As Larry indicated, we have a letter of support from Counselor Ed Flynn and the Old South Meeting House. We also have a letter of non-opposition based on a vote from the downtown Bid. And we expect to forward other letters to you before next Wednesday. We have well over 100 support letters that we've garnered during that time. Our model of engagement is not just to engage and talk to the neighborhood. We've gotten ourselves pretty enmeshed in the community. And it's not just by giving, you know, giving money to some of these organizations that you see here. Most of these are in Boston, or some of them are in some other communities. But it also is involved at a higher level. I'm on the advisory board for the Rean Immigrant Center. I know a couple of other members of our team are either on the Board of Build or the Union of Minority Neighborhoods. And so, you know, and we've done a lot of work with St. Anthony Shrine to help them as well. So, we, you know, we've been very active, and we've stayed very active throughout this time. Okay, and the next slide. To talk about our operations specifically, thank you. We currently, on the right-hand side of the screen here, with the black awning, you can see the entrance to 21 Milk Street, and that's the entrance for other members, other tenants in the building going through that entrance as well. That's currently our entrance for our medical patients. And then next to that is an ADA entrance where we installed, a few years ago, we installed the ADA elevator to help, to assist people to get up into the lobby or to go down to the lower level. This will continue to be a medical entrance. We will continue to keep it as such. Adult-use consumers will not go through this entrance. They will, they will access the space through the corner of Milk and Holly Street, which you see on the left-hand side of the screen. We will have a guard, we have a guard currently in the lobby when you come into the, into the space from the medical side. There's already a guard there on duty all day. We will be adding a guard on the other door as well. This is an important part of our commitment to make sure that, A, that it's safe and secure, but also that, we're going back to the comment earlier, that I heard earlier at the earlier presentation about making sure minors don't enter the facility. We have a three, a triple-check system where basically the guard is the first point of contact, and the guards will check the IDs of either medical patients or adult-use consumers. Once they get past that, they'll be in the vestibule, the receptionist will check them again, and then, once they get into the sales area, the sales associate will check them a third time. And the, you know, we reserve the right at any stage along the way, if there's, if as George Gagnis, our VP of Security, likes to say, if it looks like a duck, it's a duck. And, you know, if we are uncertain about anyone, we reserve the right not to serve them. We will have, one of the reasons why we want to use this other entrance is to, is to help minimize the lines. We are, and I'll show you on the floor plans in a second, but we'll be expanding our facility to have 22 point-of-sale stations. And by having the adult-use consumers come this way, and our medical patients coming the other way, we're allowed, it allows us to continue to give our medical patients all the best, you know, best access that they believe that they should have. And then, adult-use consumers will also have good access, but it'll be dedicated to them on the, on the, in the other entrance. Just to preempt this as well, we have committed that for the first six months that we're in operation, we will utilize a reservation system on the adult-use side. Hasn't been, there haven't been any issues on the medical side, but on the adult-use side, we have said we will use a reservation system. The next slide is just showing kind of how we're going to separate this out. This first slide here is the, is the, is the current medical level. This will be expanded from the current six point-of-sale stations we have. Sometimes we have seven if we include one other piece there, but we're going to go from six to 13 stations on this level. And then downstairs, if you go to the next slide, Leslie, that will be, that, the space downstairs had been used by a nonprofit that we let use the space rent-free for the last four years. They actually opened a new center down in Falmouth, and so all their operations are now housed there, so the timing worked out well. We'll have another nine stations in the downstairs area below, below-street level. Both levels are serviced by an ADA elevator currently. It's operational, and both levels have ADA-access bathrooms, et cetera, so it's already set up for that. The next slide, please. In terms of our security, I think the best measure of how we, the best way to articulate how we operate is, we always have looked to have, at a minimum, whatever the city and state require in terms of security system, but we always look to exceed that. And because of that, we believe that we have had an unblemished record at 21 Milk Street for, in four years of operation. I mentioned earlier that we have guards at each entrance. We're going to have, we'll have a third kind of floating guard as well to make sure that we have proper coverage. Part of that is to allow us to kind of keep, keep an eye on the outside area as it relates to, you know, people coming, leaving the facility and either, you know, making sure that no one's passing anything to a minor or smoking outside. So, the, you know, we can't be the police for the entire downtown crossing area, but we can do our part around us, and if, you know, if we're made aware of any issues with anybody, either by the city or if our people see it, we, you know, we reserve the right to ban people from coming to our facility if they abuse the privileges of shopping with us. As I said, we've had an excellent record in Boston since we've opened. It's not just us saying that. We've heard those comments from others, including the mayor's office, the Boston Police Department, and others. We, back in 2016, we did pay for several street cameras to help the city network, and we hope we were able to contribute that way, in that way, to, to the overall, you know, prevention efforts in downtown crossing. The next slide, please. The, in terms of the mass transit, we are, we are within a, I don't know if I could say a stone's throw, it depends how strong your arm is, but we're very close, we're within certainly a very short walking distance to every single subway line of the city. In addition to that, we have six bus routes within three, that stop within three blocks of 21 Milk Street. On the parking side, next slide, I can go right to the next one. On the parking side, we, you know, we believe there's ample parking. We did a survey, and there's, based on our research, there's over 3,600 spots within 1,000 feet. You know, part of our work to make sure that, that this would not have an impact, we, you know, we did.
Ow! He needs to roll his window down. He needs to roll his window down.
Okay. I can't open my window here, but anyway, we did a traffic, we did do a traffic study, and the conclusion of the traffic study was that the impact at this location would be negligible. We've shared that study with the city previously. Interestingly, what we know from our experience is that 80% of the patients that come to us are already down, are either already downtown for other reasons, they live nearby, or they've taken mass transit. So, it's not like people are driving into the city just to, just to buy cannabis and needing to park nearby. So, they're in for other reasons, they bring other activity to the neighborhood, but that's, that's, that's based on an actual survey of our actual patients. That was done a little while ago, but I think it's probably still accurate today. In terms of, in terms of delivery of product and transport of cash, we've been doing this without incident for four years. We random, you know, when it comes to product delivery, we randomize our deliveries. We don't bring anything through the front door, we have a back door, we can do that through, but we randomize the timing of it so that, you know, people don't know. We're in constant communication as required by the law with, or the delivery vehicles in constant communication with our control center back at the cultivation center, and we, and we are in touch as well with the dispensary as we're getting close. On the cash side, you know, we currently have regular pickups. I mean, the number of pickups will vary based on the amount of cash in the store at any one time. We use Century Bank as well, as what you heard earlier. When it comes to cash payment or cash, just understand that we see about, a little bit more than 50% of our business currently is done through cash, what's called cashless ATM, so sort of like a debit card, but it's not like all of our transactions are done with cash, but still, with the cash we do take in, we kind of keep an eye on, and we time our pickups accordingly. And, you know, when those, when either a transporter or pickup happens, we rotate our guard there, which is one of another reason why we want to have another floating guard is to better cover that and keep someone at the door. As I said, we've been operating without incident here on these fronts for four years, over four years now. You know, in the interest of, you know, we were, I was, I thought we had 10 minutes, I was trying to keep my comments to that, and then if you go to the next slide, I'll just summarize by saying, you know, we think that we have met almost all the criteria in our actual operation over the last four years. We, you know, we're always striving to do better, and we would always, you know, hope to do better on that front. On the employment plan, we see that being a continuation of what we've done, where, you know, we, and you see the results for yourself in terms of what our diversity mix is and so on. So, I think the best thing right now is for us to open it up for questions from the, from the commissioners.
Thank you. I will begin with Chairwoman Weiss. Chairwoman, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that. I'm not sure who to address my two questions to, but first, I want to recognize the fact that in 2016, when you guys first opened, the law was different, but you have a host community agreement in place that says you will not seek to change your status from medical to recreational. Do you want to just comment on that? And what brings you back today? What has changed in your business plan? What has changed in the neighborhood? And describe how you've come to us today from just being a medical only.
Well, you know, the landscape has changed, the landscape has changed significantly since 2015, which, which was when that was first contemplated. And by all accounts, no matter who you speak with, I think we've run an excellent operation at 21 Milk Street over the past four years with no negative impact on the local community. And our feeling is if anyone should be, should be granted an ability to operate in this, in this important area of the city, it should be an experienced operator like Patriot Care. And the fact that leaders in our community like Counselor Flynn and the downtown Bid and the Old South Meeting House would either support or not oppose us on that front is probably the best measure of that, the answer to that.
Okay, thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that you have a prime location in downtown Boston, and something that this board and the city council has discussed at length is the buffer zone. So, by us granting a license to you at this location, it could potentially block other applicants from opening up in this area. Would you be open to supporting a buffer zone variance within a half mile should another applicant come before us?
Well, you know, that's a good question, Chairwoman. There are many neighborhood groups, officials, and other members of the community whose opinions on that are much more important than ours, but I think what I could say is we would support whatever decision they would make in terms of that.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set, Leslie.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you. So, a question is, given the financial barriers to entry, are you helping to fund, helping the applicants who are in the social equity programs in any way, like a scholarship or a stipend? And also, you talked a lot about qualified applicants, and can you talk about that a little bit? What does that mean in terms of qualified? What qualities are you looking for? What are those qualifications? And are you working with people with criminal records?
Can you just say that last part about the, what qualification? Can you just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you talked, I'm sorry, you talked a lot about hiring qualified applicants, so I'm thinking about the qualifications, and are you working with folks with criminal records?
Well, we, you know, I think, I think I've described what we, part of our commitment to, our major part of our commitment to the social, to social equity is what I described earlier in terms of our, the creation and the running of our programs with the community colleges. We think that's an important aspect because that learning is invaluable, because we can offer people an understanding that, you know, people who want to participate, an understanding of how, you know, what the pitfalls are, and then, and then we, and we've had numerous students who've come to us afterwards and asked for help on different things. In addition to that, at a corporate level, we have, corporate level meaning Columbia Care level, we have a partnership with a group called All of Us or None, which is a group founded and run by individuals impacted by the justice system. Through that, we host a monthly webinar for returning citizens on how to secure jobs in cannabis and how to participate in the cannabis economy as business owners. I think that, I mean, that's, that's most of what we do in terms of actually qualifications. I think that we, you know, we look for people who will, you know, be able to interact properly with our customers. That's the number-one qualification, and people that are, that are able to communicate with people. I, you know, in terms of your question about, you said about hiring, I forget what you said at the very end there.
Yeah, so I was talking about, so two things, just to gain clarity. One is, you talked, you talked about the social equity programs at the community colleges, which are important, and I was asking, are you providing sort of funding or scholarships or any sort of stipend for people to pay for those, attend those programs? And also, and I think you were beginning to answer the question about, in terms of the barriers for people in terms of employment, and they have queries and so forth, how are you working through that?
Well, we have, you know, we, like I said, we, you know, we look first and foremost at whether someone seems qualified in terms of being able to do the job. When we, it's a hard question to answer, only because when you actually run the background, if someone has gone through the expungement program and you run the background check, it may not show up anywhere because if it's been expunged. So, we don't really know, because we also don't ask. I mean, it's not something that we're asked, you know, we haven't really been asking that, so, and part of that, you know, that's also to protect the employee and other, you know, so we, it's a little difficult to answer that fully. I mean, I think that, you know, if it came back and it was, if it was, if it was an allowed offense under the, under the regulations, we would have no issue with that. And as I said, we are working with All of Us or None, which is, which is attempting to write that as well, and we, you know, but, and we are, you know, we are working in that regard as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner, yes. Commissioner Smith just almost answered it, but I feel the gentleman gave a pretty vague answer. So, I mean, is there a plan to work with people who have criminal records to hire them? Do you have a plan that would ensure that they would be looked at to be hired by your business?
Are you saying, do we have a specific plan to target those individuals?
Well, not, not so much to target, but do you have some sort of hiring plan for people who have come back with a criminal record?
Well, can I, can I get, can I come back to you as a follow-up on that? I believe that, I believe the answer I gave was not intended to be vague, but as I said in my answer, if, when we run the background check, if their offense is something that is no longer prohibited, you know, back in the original days of the medical program, you know, there was prohibitions on that hiring. That's changed now, which we support. But, I, but, so I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be a vague answer. If they came back with something that, that no longer is an issue, we would, we would not let that be an impediment to hiring them. I mean, but we're not, I don't, I'll have to get back to you with more detail if that's not sufficient for you.
That's fine, thank you. I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambo.
That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Lambo, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question. Thanks for talking about your hiring record on diversity inclusion. Can you share a little bit more about what, at what levels of diversity people of color and women are in leadership, and what your plan and plans have been, or your track record of that in recruiting, retaining, promoting, supporting, career pathways, all of those kinds of things? That's question number one.
Yeah. You know, maybe the best person that can, I don't, I don't have the full rundown on the entire management team. Nellie Rivera is on the call, and Nellie has been our General Manager for the last three years at 21 Milk Street. Nellie, can you, if you can unmute yourself, can you describe your management team, just so we, I know where we are, level-setting?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um...
So my management team consists of myself, I'm a Hispanic woman. I have one black floor lead and two other women and then two males.
In terms, but in management, it's you and, it's you and your floor lead, right?
Yes, myself and one floor lead. And then as far as women, we have one, two, it's four. It's three and three, actually, three women, three men. Did you hear that, Bob?
I think, well, Commissioner, did you hear what Nellie said?
Yes, I did. Thank you. And how many employees do you have total at the medical facility?
I mean, oh, go ahead, Nellie. It's, I think it's around 12, right?
Yeah, right now we have 12.
But it fluctuates. And as I said, we'll be hiring another 20 to 30. And just to reiterate that, we will be holding job fairs, at least two job fairs in Boston to do that. So we can also use those to address any concerns that you have, you know, about that.
Absolutely.
And just a question about, in terms of the workers that are there, are there things in place so that they have a voice at the workplace? Do you have a regular feedback loop and comments? Do you have protections for anyone that wants to voice concerns within the company?
Well, there's, there's an open door policy. So they can communicate with HR or anybody that I directly report to at any time. We have huddles at the beginning of the day, every day, so that if they have any concerns, they can voice them there. Yeah, there's, and we're, we, we work very close together. So there is a lot of interaction with everybody. So it's, yeah, it's like a big family. Nobody really has any secrets from one another. And if someone's having an issue with somebody, they just voice it.
Commissioner, I'm glad you asked the question. It's a very important, it's very important that we have that, not just for the purposes that you're thinking of, I think. But, you know, given that we're, it's, you know, it's a regulated industry and you always, you know, want to be sure that everything's being done properly. If any of our employees feel that there's something that's not being done properly, we need them to have the channel to be able to go and speak with someone above their manager or outside the store and, and, you know, because we, that's, that's most, that's, that's actually as important for us as anything else. But not to minimize what we're talking about, but I'm just saying that, that, that to us is, is really super important only because of, we want to make sure that we don't run afoul of anything on a regulatory side.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner St. Giann, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you so much. Actually, my question was going to be Darlene's exact question. To just emphasize that, you know, when we talk about diversity, it's really important to think about where diversity lies among the power structure within an organization and that the diversity that exists within an organization is there deliberately and through direct action, not just something that's, you know, circumstance or, or, you know, personal network. So I just think it would be, I would love to see the data on, on the entire, throughout the employment from entry level to management and how the diversity breaks down.
Well, that's a great comment. And I would say that it's something that's really important, not just to us locally, but it's something that's really important to us at the national level, at the, our parent company level. You know, we, we have the same diversity goals nationally as we have locally. I think we can always strive to do better on every, you know, wherever we operate. And we, and we do strive to do better. To further that end though, you know, we have, I mean, we, we have a, we have a diversity committee, which includes several members of our senior management team, which is looking, we're currently in the middle of a survey of all of our operations around the country to see where we stand. It's very easy for Nellie to come up with her diversity metrics for that location. But it's, you know, when someone, when you hire somebody and you give them the EEOC form to fill out, you know, the reality is not everybody fills it out fully or accurately. And they choose to answer some or the others. So if you really want a good, accurate representation, you have to do a little more digging. So the diversity committee is working hard to make sure that we're doing everything possible at the local levels and doing better. We have several women in our executive ranks, including C-suite. And on the board level at Columbia Care, we have an African-American board member. But like I said, we're always looking to do better and striving to do better on all those fronts as well.
Thank you. And just to follow up also, and I'm sorry, I keep using people's first names. I'm getting used to going back, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lamboz. And I believe Mr. Jackson, I also called Tito. So, but in terms of following up on Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Smith, is, is sort of, again, a deliberate action to hire those that have a query. And ways that you can do that is partnership with different organizations, different community organizations that work directly with their community members that are returning. So I think you said that you do a regular webinar about entering the cannabis industry. I think that's, that's fabulous. But also how are we, you know, how are we making deliberate action to make, to recruit those same members to join directly into, into Patriot Care, particularly given your, your record of already running a, you know, well-run industry. Hugely, hugely helpful.
Well, let me, if I, let me, I'll come back to you with that. I mean, it's, it's something that's obviously a desire for us, you know, nationwide. I mean, it's not an issue that's specific to Boston or not, you know, it's not a concern specific to Boston. And so let me come back to you with that more detailed response.
Thank you. And if neither the chairwoman or any of the commissioners have additional questions, we will turn to public testimony. Is there anyone, any individual here to testify in support of this application, beginning with representatives from elected officials' offices?
How you doing? My name's Ed McGuire. I'm the chief of staff of the Office of Neighborhood Services. And I conducted the public process for 21 Milk Street. I believe the date of the meeting was on September 4th, 2019. The meeting went very well. The team has always been very responsive to the mayor's office as well as the constituents. And I think that's shown primarily through, you know, the non-opposition and support letters that you got from the district councillor as well as the Downtown Bid. And conducting that meeting, you know, the meeting went well overall. There was particular questions that Chairwoman Joyce had brought up specific to a former agreement that had occurred. But overall, you know, them having been such a, you know, a great operator in the area, a lot of the surrounding community decided to be supportive of their application and sent those in. We did get opposition to the, to their proposal from some folks in Midtown Park Plaza. Just bring that to people's attention. But overall, the, the general application for, for 21 Milk Street went very well. And it's been very good for us to work with them.
Excited.
Are there any other individuals representing? Oh, I believe there is Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office.
Yeah, members of the war and the cannabis war. Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. I'm here to offer Councilor Flynn support for the application of Patriot Care to locate retail adult use marijuana establishment at 21 Milk Street in Boston. As you may be aware, Patriot Care has run a medical marijuana dispensary at the same location since August 2016. Since their initial opening, they have been an engaged, considerate, responsible business in the district. Patriot Care has a track record of responsible operation on Münch Street. And the council agrees that they have the ability to expand similarly into adult use at the same location. They have worked well and collaboratively with BPDA and the city. They have worked closely with the Downtown Bid and have had numerous community meetings since deciding to apply for a marijuana establishment license. Patriot Care's management has been responsive and responsible throughout the time the councilor has been working with them. I hope that the war will approve their application. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to contact the office. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, beginning with elected officials or their representatives? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this application?
Excuse me, Chair. I, I forgot to unmute myself when you were talking in favor, testimony in favor. Gabriel Camacho, I will spare you the lengthy introduction. We are in favor of the applicant as long as a labor peace agreement that was executed with SEIU 1199 is extended to Local 1445. UFCW.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who wish to testify regarding this application? The board will take this matter under advisement. Moving on to the next agenda item. As again, a reminder, the terms and conditions included in the granting of any license by this board will be specifically incorporated into a host community agreement should one be executed or should a license be approved and should a host community agreement be executed with the applicant. While the BCB is not the legal entity that executes the host community agreement with the approved licensee, it will be a memorialization of the discussions with the community as well as before the board today. With that, calling Massachusetts Citizens for Social Equity LLC has applied for a recreational cannabis retail license to be exercised at 561 Dudley Street in Roxbury. The applicant is an equity applicant. Applicant contact, Michael Ross.
Hello, everyone. I want to apologize for the poor choice in horizontal lines for this shirt today. I'm realizing throwing off some, some images. But, but other than that, happy to be with you on behalf of my client. I have a presentation that I was going to just hit really quick. The stars of our application really are Brian and Jason, who I'll talk about in this presentation. And so I really want to leave time for them. I'm just the attorney on this project. I'm also joined by my co-councils, Dan Gissman and JD Barry. And so let me just kind of hit some points and then I'll, and then I'll open it up. Again, I really, I really would love to have Desiree and Brian, Jason, the team, speak. But this is the project. This is 561 Dudley Street. Where we're talking about, this is a rendering of what it will look like if we are able to proceed. You can hit the next slide, Leslie. Thank you. And these are the operators. So Jason's on the left, Brian's on the right. They are current existing businessmen in Dorchester. They are born and raised in Boston. They have a really amazing story themselves in terms of being targets of the war on drugs, having lost friends to the war on drugs, both through the prison system but also through violence. And they have an amazing story. They both have been running Antonio's Hi-Fi Pizza Restaurant for several years. They've, they've won numerous awards from their community for being such generous and open business people. And Jason has also trained at Occidental College in California, specializing in cannabis and working in the industry. So he brings an enormous amount of personal understanding and knowledge of the industry. And together with Brian and really their family's resources, just being lucky enough to have a couple of bodegas that they can use. They don't have to pay the hold fees. They don't have to pay an outrageous rent while they're going through the permitting process. Our firm discounts for equity applicants. So we've been trying to get them through here with as little as a monetary impact as possible. But they really just have an amazing story and they actually make really good pizza. So I'm going to hit the next slide. This is the broader team, which also includes Desiree Frandjul. She actually lives in, I believe she, she lives in Orchard Park Public Housing, which is, I don't know, a baseball throwaway for using the analogies or two or three to this site. And that really is the team. Brian does own the 100%. He's listed in our beneficial interest documents that we've previously submitted as the 100% owner. And he is the 100% owner. We've also, there is a pretty lengthy, I think, a 200-page companion piece that goes along with this presentation as well. So I'm kind of hitting some, just some top line points here to socialize this concept with, with the members of the board. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed facility to be located at 561 Dudley Street, about 4,600 square feet, accessible to nearby bus lines as well as the Fairmont Line. We're, we're thinking about 15 to 20 employees. One of the great things about this space is that we have access to 15 parking spaces. You know, the majority of our customers are going to be coming from the immediate area. Car ownership is lower in the city of Boston than it is in, say, the suburbs. So we do expect a lot of foot traffic from people. But it's still nice to have parking available. You know, and it will, it will create that option in any case. Next slide, please. This is what the site looks like today. It's, you know, it's, it's a neighborhood staple. A lot of people go here for their, you know, for their daily kind of items. But, you know, I think Brian and Jason have a great way of talking about how these, how these local convenience stores or these local bodegas are really fighting for every possible corner. And in some ways, by freeing up or maybe converting one of these convenience stores to a use like this, they actually anticipate that some of the other surrounding businesses would stand to benefit. But the, the, the store here has been in the family for, for many years. And it's really that relationship, that, that relationship that allows them to, to take advantage of this opportunity to be in front of you today. Next slide, please. So it just demonstrates that we clear the, the buffer zones. We also obviously attested to the same in the affidavit that we supplied ahead of this hearing. The next slide will show you a little more detail, the actual site plan. And also confirms the half-mile buffer from the nearest dispensary that we're outside of it. Next slide, please. This is just a little bit of a close-up of that site plan. We can just go to the next slide. Yeah, so we're basically going to, just on the building, we're going to add a second floor to the existing structure. And, and then, and then clean up, clean up the, the rest of the site and tighten up the site. The, and this is a rendering, of course. We also have some plans, I'll show you in a second. This handicap ramp you see on the right-hand side of the image will actually be relocated to the interior L section of, of the building. Next slide, please. This is just the kind of basic floor plan where, you know, the public would have access to the ground floor and upstairs would be essentially staff, staff only. And, you know, Brian, Brian, Jason can talk, talk a little bit more about how it all works and the flow. There'll be two, you know, points of security ID check and all consistent with the CCC regulations. Next slide, please. That's the rendering again. Next slide, please. So, you know, we kind of mocked up the, the criteria by each category. And, you know, we're very proud to be 100% owned by a Latino, black individual and Boston resident. Turning white will speak to our compliance of the equity program. But we submitted that information. And there are aggressive goals. I mean, you know, Jason and Brian are We submitted that information. And there are aggressive goals. I mean, you know, Jason and Brian are from this community. They know the people that they're close to, again, have been victims of the whole war on drug, have criminal records. They want to provide opportunities to the people that they've grown up with. And many of them are people that will have a quarry or will be a person of color. And because of that, they were unafraid to put out some, some aggressive goals for hiring. They would like to see 65% people of color. They obviously want to see 50% women. They want to go to, you know, in terms of the criminal record piece, they're going to be reaching out to mass hire, Operation Exit Program, the Mayor's Office of Returning Citizens specifically to try to hire people who have been previously in the criminal justice system as a result of the war on drugs. Next slide. Their employment plan, just kind of drilling down a little bit deeper, that not only do they want to see the previous criteria I outlined, but they also want to see that 65% of the people actually come from Roxbury. 75% of their employees are actually Boston residents in addition. They have a full package of benefits that they want to offer their employees. Full healthcare, a minimum of $15 per hour, but many of the positions will be higher than that. They want to be able to offer, you know, all the, all the benefits that a good job offers in terms of paid time off and other, another kind of robust benefit packages for their employees. And as I mentioned, they do want to make sure that they're hiring people with criminal records. Next slide, please. So community feedback has been very positive. It's been robust. It's been, and it's trended in the, in the right direction. We have had, you know, this, we of course have a letter of support from Counselor Janey. We have a letter of support from Orchard Gardens. We have a letter of support from DSNI. Those are the, you know, kind of the main, the main organizations and are people in the, in the area. We also submitted in the packet, packet is a 213-page packet, so I'm sorry, hopefully they didn't all get printed out, but we submitted in the packet, I think 140 letters of support. Desiree informs me, she actually has another 160, which will spare you unless you want. We've done a lot to, you know, they, frankly, they've done a lot to just knock on doors and talk to people. And more so than I think any other, other people that I've worked with in this space, and it was a great effort. Next slide, please. So our location and our security plan, the site really lends itself to a, to a good flow. We, we will be working with Integrity Protective Services, which is a locally-owned, minority-run company here in Boston, Boston-based company. That's very important to Jason and Brian, that they have their, their contracting with companies that are owned by people of color. They, we are also similar to what you heard about Mr. Jackson's proposal. We will have what we call a good neighbor policy. We basically require customers on the intake to agree to a certain set of just basic principles of things they will and will not do. And their agreement there allows us to, to restrict them in the future should they violate those things. And those are just basic kind of good neighbor policies, like not smoking outside, which is not legal, in front of people's houses or in parks or in the public. But bringing your product back home to or to wherever you're going and using it, you know, there. And that we want people, we're going to hold people accountable for that. You know, we're not going to let people come in if they're just double parking and running in and all those things. Those are the kinds of things that we'll be doing with our security team, who will be outside as well as inside. And making sure that the operation doesn't just run perfectly on the inside of the building, but that the, the effect of what we're doing is also radiating outside the building. Next slide, please. And, you know, we have great, great access to, to public transit. I mentioned that earlier. We have parking, which is a blessing at this point. There's, it's very hard to find parking in and around the city and some of these sites. And in fact, they have 15 is a really, is a good thing. And then, you know, we have our transportation plan in terms of the delivery of product. And we'll be able to control when and how that occurs. And be able to stagger that and time it in a way that doesn't conflict with rush hour or times that you don't want to be delivering product. And that will be through our relationships with our vendors, who are also, the intent is to buy, because, you know, we're a retailer. We're not medical. We're not growing. We're not cultivating at this point. Hopefully, maybe one day in the future. But we want, the company wants to buy from other suppliers who are local, who are equity applicants, who are from Boston. And that's going to be the effort to try to network locally, to try to do that as well. Next slide, please. I think we're rounding home here. This is just kind of give you a sense of what we've been doing for the last 20 months. You know, we filed with the city initially for the ISD process back in January of 2019. We had our community outreach meeting. And we did a lot of community outreach, and we're still doing community outreach. But we did, we had our actual Capitol Community Outreach Meeting, formal community outreach meeting on August 13th, 2019. We continued to outreach and meet with our groups after that meeting. And now we're in front of you to, today, August 12th. We took a shot. We just guessed, when would we be able to open our doors? And we, we guessed August 2021. But, you know, it could be sooner, it could be later, just kind of forecasting what we need to do. I think that might be, there might be one more slide here. That's it. So yeah, I'd love to open it up. And I don't know if at this point, if like Brian or Jason just had anything, just a quick thing they want to say, or you want to just wait for questions. I just want to be respectful of, you guys are the actual people. So.
Thank you, Ross. You want to speak?
Jason or Brian?
Yeah, if Brian wants me to start, I'll go ahead. First, I want to thank everybody, everybody on the Board, City of Boston, our attorneys, Mike Ross, JD Barry, Dan Glisman, and everybody else participating in this historic moment that we are in today. Like Mike said, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for all of the stars aligning in our favor. When legalization happened, the idea that my brother and I would be proposing a retail location was not even on our mind. And here we are, making so much progress in the sense that we're being reviewed by the Board today after starting this journey almost 20 months ago. It's, it's really emotional for us, being that me and my brother have both were survivors of our best friends. He lost his best friend and I lost my best friend over marijuana. So I just want to thank you guys for granting us the opportunity to be reviewed at the first hearing. And I want to pass it on to my brother and then I'll get to some questions.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the Board and the public for attending this hearing again. And like I said, to follow up on what my brother said, our mission, our passion going behind this business is to provide safe and legal access of cannabis to our community. And I want to thank all of the supporters that we gathered during the community outreach process, even those that opposed us initially. But through incorporating the resident feedback and, you know, addressing concerns, we were able to earn the support and trust. And I'm ready to address any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we turn it over to the Chairwoman and Commissioners for questions, I will ask Attorney Chayla White from the Office of Economic Development to testify regarding the equity certification.
Good afternoon again, everyone. I was able to certify Massachusetts Citizens for Social Equity based on the documentation that Mr. Brian Chavez provided to me. He met four of the criteria set forth in Section 8-13.3 of the Ordinance establishing equitable regulation of the cannabis industry in the city of Boston. As was stated in the presentation, Mr. Chavez is the 100% beneficial interest holder of the proposed entity, which exceeds the 51% ownership threshold set forth in the Ordinance. Mr. Chavez qualified under the following criteria. A person who has resided in an area of disproportionate impact as defined by the Cannabis Control Commission for at least five of the past 10 years. Mr. Chavez provided proof of residency certificate from the Boston Elections Department, which established that he has lived at his home address from 2007 through 2000, through the present, through the present, which is 13 years. In addition to that, he provided his driver's license, which confirmed his home address in Dorchester is in this track number 90300, which has been designated an area of disproportionate impact by the CCC. He also provided documentation that he qualifies under a person who has passed arrest or conviction for possession, sale, manufacturing, or cultivation of marijuana between 1971 and 2016, and has been a resident of Boston for the past five years. Mr. Chavez did present his arrest record from an arrest on September 7th of 2012. He was arrested for possession to distribute a class D substance, which is marijuana. Again, Mr. Chavez provided documentation that he lived in the city of, that he's been a resident of the city of Boston for the past 13 years. He also qualifies under a person who has resided in the city of Boston for at least seven years. And additionally, he has self-identified as, as Latino and Afro-Caribbean.
Thank you, Attorney White. Before we move on to questions for the applicant, Chairwoman Joyce, or do you have any questions regarding the certification?
I don't have questions about the certification.
And before we move on to questions for the applicants, do any of the Commissioners have questions regarding the certification? That Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I'm not sure who to direct this to, Jason or Brian, but do you plan on partnering with any delivery operators?
I'll let Jason answer that, CEO.
Yep, no problem. So being that my brother is on the path to be a social equity certificate holder through the state of Massachusetts, we do plan on expanding his company to deliver. So that process just began fairly recently ago. We are in the process of going for that. We hope to partner up with somebody that's already been working with us to get them that delivery license and get them going.
Okay. And just to clarify, Brian, you are the 100% owner?
Correct, Chairwoman.
And do you have any existing or pending interests in any other cannabis applications before the city or in the state?
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll hit that if I can, because it's a little complicated. And, and it's appropriate to tail on to what Jason just said as well, because you're, you're only allowed to have three of any one license, and a delivery license would be added as to one of the three. So if you own more than 10%, so, so we're conscious of the fact that we're counting here. But the other, there are going to be two other applicants, I believe, are pending in front of the Board and Madam Chair. One is for Rosendale location on Washington Street. And then, and we'll get that number for you in a second. And then, it's like 1089.
3995 Washington Street.
Sorry, sorry. I'm trying to do it from memory. 3995 Washington Street. That's in Rosendale. And that would be the same entity makeup, 100% owned by Brian Chavez. There's a third where Brian would represent 51% of the ownership interest. And that's a company by the name, it would be ERBA, that's been formed, E-R-B-A. And that's for 43 Freeport Street in Dorchester. And that was a group coming together and 49% ownership, and Brian coming in at 51% ownership. It was unexpected. It was, it was not on their radar. They were reached out to by this applicant who comprises the ERBA. And they, they said that they wanted to do it. The, the, the topic of having multiple licenses was actually referenced in our application as well. We chose to speak to it because we wanted to address it and wanted to present it as a positive thing. You know, the whole point of the cannabis industry was to kind of follow in the liquor industry. And as you know, in the liquor industry, obviously, from your work as the Chair of that Board, there are chains in our city and in our state of multiple owners of entities, of liquor store entities. In this, in this case, I think that Brian would be alone in perhaps the entire country of being an equity applicant who has control of three dispensaries in one city, in one major city. And we see that as a positive. We see that as affirming the, the principles of what was passed to create the Boston Cannabis Board and the Boston Equity Program. And we hope that you do too as well.
Just to clarify, Brian would be 100% owner of this 561 Dudley Street one. Brian would be 100% owner of the Washington Street and Rosendale one. And he would be 51% owner of the 43 Freeport Street one?
Correct.
And then there was a mention of delivery? So those would all be, those would all be retail? And then, is it the brother that would be doing the delivery? Is that what you were trying to say?
In the case of the delivery, under that scenario that you just laid out of the other three licenses, Brian would only be able to have 9.9% of that license without violating the three cap as it's currently put out by the CCC, because they're counting the delivery license as, as a retail license. At least they were the last time I looked at it. I don't think they changed that yet.
If I could just butt in, I thought, Mike, and I might, we can definitely look over this. But I thought it was three licenses in each category. So my brother would be able to have three retails, three cultivations, three of each in each category.
Yeah, with the, and I, my understanding was with the exception being, delivery does not get, does not get, you know, Dan, Dan Glisman's on the call. I know he spent a little bit more time on this. I know that's not the purpose of this hearing, but I want to be accurate with what we're, what we're presenting. Dan, do you, can you, can you add any to that, please?
Yeah, I can. Thanks, Mike. And, and you're correct, currently as it stands, the Commission is in the process of amending the regulations again, but.
And I'm sorry, Dan, can you like just identify who you work for or who you're affiliated with?
Oh, my apologies. Daniel Glisman, attorney at Prince Louisville.
Okay.
But, but yeah, my understanding is currently that the delivery licenses will qualify as a retail establishment license in the same category.
Okay, good to know. So just to be transparent with everybody, as we've been throughout this whole process, our intention was for Desiree Frandjul, who is part of our team, she will be obtaining the delivery license under her name and be forming a woman-owned delivery company that will be working in partnership with us.
And if I can just chime in on that, my name is Desiree Frangio. I'm the Community Outreach. I am also a social equity applicant, and I am also an applicant for the delivery license. I'm actually halfway through it now, and I look forward to completing it and in the future potentially having an all-women-owned business with delivery. Thank you.
So just, just to, just to sum this up, Brian is 100% owner of this application. Brian is 51% owner of the application at 43 Freeport Street. And Brian is 100% owner of the Dudley Street application. And each of those places is going to partner with a delivery, and Desiree would be that delivery person?
Yeah, and I just want to, this app, we're being reviewed for Dudley Street, so it'd be 100%. so it'd be 100% for Dudley Street, 100% for the 3995 Washington Street, Rosendale location, and 51% for Freeport Street. And if I could just piggyback off what Mike was saying about that dynamic of my brother owning three licenses, or pursuing three licenses, I mean, we intend, and it's our intention to do this, to promote equity, right? My brothers, we understand what we're attempting to do here, which is monumental and historic, and it being an equity applicant that's going for three locations across the city. It's also consistent with what we see in our neighborhood with Fernandez Liquors, with Blanchards, with Supreme Liquors. So modeling this alongside with the alcohol business, I feel like was appropriate. And I just want to shed a little bit of light on the other two applications. The other, the Rosendale location is also owned by our family member, and we're also not paying a hold fee to go for it there. So this was just one of those things where we never thought we'd be pursuing one, let alone two. The zoning worked for it, we couldn't believe it, we started the community process, we talked to the community before we actually filed our application, kind of just got fearless for it, and right away, we were convinced that this is the right thing to do. If we can go for as many as possible, and we're able to, then, you know, we felt like that would be the best thing in the name of equity. So we're not paying a hold fee for none of these locations, and that's the only reason why we're here in front of you today, to be able to do this. My brother owns two restaurants, he's a local business owner in Fields Corner. He's not funded by anybody, he's not having any investors after this point. We're kind of just taking this one step at a time. And again, because of these properties are within the family, it's really the only reason why we're able to pursue this many licenses.
Okay, thank you. So Jason, to sum up what you said, these applications are at family-owned property? And the funding for this, or this is like self-funded? I don't know who wants to say that. There are no other investors?
As of now, no. And we plan on, you know, entertaining those questions and those conversations later on. And I'm sure we'll make you guys fully aware of who we're taking on and what the structure would be. But our game plan, sort of say, is to take this one step at a time. We don't have, you know, time, let alone a lot of resources, to kind of have these, you know, premature conversations. So after we move forward, more forward in the process, and we will obviously take on more conversations regarding investors, but our plan is to hopefully not need it so much. We're not going to be an Apple Store, we're not going to be these, you know, we're living within our means, we're used to that, we're going to basically be growing as we grow. So, you know, it won't be the prettiest thing in the world at the beginning, but as we generate revenue, we'll be making minor improvements to the interior and stuff like that. But it's no way going to be one of these Apple Store-style looking stores that everyone's seen. But, you know, so we're a family-owned company, this is a mom-and-pop operation, and, you know, we're going to keep it like that for as long as we can.
And just to be clear, Madam Chair, he was referring to Rosendale and this particular application, Dudley, that are in front of you. The ERBA company is 49% owned by another entity. It was just those two that are kind of bootstrapped through the family ownership of these bodegas.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you, just really quick. So you're repurposing this space on his cottage in Duddy? From what I've seen, are you thinking of rehiring those people who work there right now?
So our uncle's been a business owner in that community for over 30 years. He's at retiring age, it's one of those other things that's come into the point where, you know, it's going to change. And before we initiated this conversation with him, he was actually looking to sell it to a out-of-town developer who was, you know, at him for the property. Thank God, like I said, you know, the way everything lined up, we were able to have the conversation with him, convince him that this was actually a possibility, and he played ball. So we won't be hiring him.
Is he the only person working there?
Him, his wife, it's a family.
A family.
Him, his wife, his daughter helps out from time to time. But yeah, he's the one putting in 16-hour workdays there right now.
And that area, which is, I know, right up near where Duddy's in, it feels very much like a less commercial than lower down Dudley Street. So thinking about how you're mitigating all those factors around people assembling, it feels more, feels less commercial, and more like a neighborhood in that area.
Right. And it is, it's the neighborhood that we grew up in, our grandmother lives in that neighborhood. We used to walk from my grandmother's house to the convenience store all the time. It is a residential neighborhood, but it does have a vibrant, not so much, more vibrant than it was before, but it does have a commercial area where, like Mike Ross touched on, there is about five bodegas within a walking distance of each other. So and that a benefit that we plan on seeing is by removing ourselves from the market, and I say ourselves, my family from the market, we plan, we hope that that will increase their market share and increase their sales and, you know, their businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner St. Jean, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you, thank you both, Jason and Brian and Mike. This is, I think, an example of what we wanted to see in terms of equity within the cannabis industry, in terms of, you know, having those most impacted by public policy and the war on drugs, and victims of the war on drugs able to benefit. So thank you very much for your application. I just had a couple of questions. Your Boston residency requirement, or not requirement, but your goal for 75% Boston residents is pretty ambitious, although hearing that it's family business, perhaps you already have those employees in mind, but just taking into consideration the role of gentrification and, you know, raise in rent and all of that. You heard from Mr. Jackson's proposal that there was going to be some kind of housing support for the employees, and I was wondering if you had thought of that as well in terms of, in order to meet that 75%, being able to support people to stay in Boston or to come to Boston if they're not already homeowners here.
Brian, you want to touch on that?
Yeah, I'll touch on that, and thank you, Commissioner St. Jean, for the question. All of the, in our outreach when we were presenting, that's just one of the points that we touched on. We wanted to provide competitive pay to our employees, because we know that there's a struggle for, you know, people that grew up here to still remain living here. I know just personally, a lot of people that I went to middle school, high school, moved out to city due to rise in rents. And this is why I wanted to be part of this industry, to provide jobs and opportunity with better competitive pay compared to what I'm known now, the restaurant industry. So, you know, we have our baseline pay that we compete, and our plans is, as we grow as a company, hopefully we get vertically integrated and go into cultivation, we can create even more jobs and more opportunities and maybe meaningful careers for people that want to engage in this industry.
Right, and then, thank you, thank you for that. And then, secondly, thinking about, just thinking about that area. So I was born and raised in Mission Hill, so not that far down the street, and we've seen how both neighborhoods have changed significantly. And one of those ways is in traffic. And so I was trying to quickly go through your proposal again, as you were presenting, to just see what you had put in there in terms of traffic mitigation. I know, Mr. Ross, you said that there was going to be, you felt, you guys believe that most people would be walking, would be within the area, but I don't know what data you have to support that, and then what you think about in terms of traffic mitigation? Because I know, I mean, Dudley Street, up and down Dudley Street, from, you know, one side to the other is blocked, you know, especially, well, like four to six.
Yeah. So being from the community, you know, this is one of the first concerns we heard, is traffic, traffic, traffic. And when we started to research traffic, Boston's population is going to be growing by 20-something percent in 10 years, of a city of 700,000 people, that's a significant number. So we immediately communicated with the community that, you know, their concerns were our concerns. Thankfully, and unfortunately, we're just a proposed location, but the city of Boston has executed 13 different ACAs with retailers across the city. One of them is a cultivator. So it's 14 total so far, 13 are retails. The anomaly that we see at Brookline, we don't plan on seeing that in Dudley Street. I don't think that the city has had much of a traffic issue with Blue Hill, the Blue Hill location at Pure Oasis, I think everybody was kind of nervous about seeing how that would roll out, but we have more parking than them. We're at a, we're at a, what I would say, a more traffic-friendly intersection than they are. And we're committed immediately to doing any type of reservation by app or queuing by phone right away. If we're going to have a large influx of people coming to that neighborhood, we want to control it. We are in communication with DSNI and the other neighborhood groups there to kind of get ahead of any potential traffic issues that arise. Again, though, I want to reiterate, traffic isn't a cannabis issue, it's a citywide issue. So, you know, we want to just provide as many solutions to reduce the impact on traffic that we're going to have, which we don't think will be much. But alongside with the delivery, the queuing in line through the app, the fact that we're going to have a very large queuing area in the store, we don't expect to have an influx of people to cause traffic problems there.
And if I can just add to that, just recently, the Fairmont train station that's by off of Dudley Street, it's a purple line, just added more service, so there will be more trains running through that stop, which I know would be a big benefit to staff and consumers that want to use the T.
And on top of what my brother just said, there is a bus stop right in front of the location.
And just to piggyback on that, I know we're short on time. Is there a timeline in terms of delivery approval? Because I think that also would have a significant impact on lowering traffic.
I'm sorry, my bandwidth cut off, can you repeat that?
A timeline on the delivery approval, of being approved for the delivery?
If I can just speak right now, I'm halfway through the application process on the delivery application. So once we complete the application, we'll have a better idea as to a timeline, and we can get back to you with that information.
Perfect.
And Commissioner, delivery being brand new, we're actually still trying to work it out, as is this. We don't, I think there's only one approved in the state right now, but we're actively working with the CCC, and it will also require a subsequent license issued by this board and you and your colleagues.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
The state's regulations on that aren't final, they're still in the comment period, and then next week, they'll be kind of released in the finals.
Great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lombos, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just a quick question, thank you again for the application. Again, I love the aggressiveness at which you're going after this and in this industry. I just wanted to, given, just get a sense of what is the hiring goal? So just not in terms of percentages, but given the comments around hiring, not hiring your uncle, are there, what are, I know that this is a new, will be new, and it is family-owned. What are the number goals of how many people you hope to hire, given your high goals of percentages of people of color residents and women? What does that actually translate into numbers in your guys' plan and ideas?
We gave you the number of 15 to 20 in the application. I wonder if Brian or Jason has any additional.
Oh, great, okay, thanks, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Oh, it's quite all right, I mean, it was 200 pages, so I don't expect you to read every bit of it, but I don't know if Jason and Brian, you have any other color on kind of your hiring goals, numbers, that kind of thing?
If I can just touch real quickly on that, on the hiring goals, you know, in my community, in my businesses, we already hire mostly residents, majority minorities. You know, during the community outreach process, we had mentioned, I had few people hired that had core reads. So, you know, you might come to the pizza station and see somebody with an ankle bracelet. He was a great employee, believed in second chances. So a lot of the targets, what I'm in our employment, I already perform in my businesses, and I just want to build off that with these establishments.
Right.
Thanks, I'm sorry, I didn't see those numbers, so thanks for that. I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, Ms. Lombos, as far as goals, we would like 100% of people that live in the neighborhood in the city to work for us. I mean, we appreciate the culture that we grew up in, right? We feel like we can be direct with one another, we can call each other out on stuff, and we can grow as a community together. One of the things that we're proposing to do is kind of model after what my brother went through, which is year up. The problem that I anticipate with hiring everybody from the community is that we're going to run into roadblocks with professional development. A lot of the people in our community haven't gone to college, a lot of people in our community haven't had this kind of professional training that my brother has had through year up in college. So we were kind of almost going to be, I don't want to say incubator, but we're kind of, we're going to be fostering our employees through professional development to work there. So it's going to be kind of like a, I'm stuck for the word right now, but we're going to grow the people around us to work with us. And one of the things that we want to do is invest in people so that, you know, they can move up within the company, you know, so we don't want people to just stay at retail. We are Massachusetts Citizens for Social Equity, and our plan is to use this platform to grow it as large as we can, to ensure that people of our community have meaningful participation in this industry across the city and across the state. And I'm ambitious across the nation. I mean, we're going to make history here, going for all three of these locations, and it's only the start. So that's what we were hoping to do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do, thank you, just a couple. And I could have missed it during Mr. Ross's presentation, but I didn't see the the plan for transportation, for finance, for money. And the second question, and it could be just because the application had been in for a while, in your original application, you were denied by the zoning board to change the business over at 561 Dudley, and I saw you filed an appeal. So I was just wondering if you were successful in that appeal?
Yeah, let me take your second question first, and then, Dan Glickman, if you can maybe queue up on the first question, to try to respond to that while I'm doing this one. I, we, so we are in, this is also a unique project for another reason, in that it's in a multifamily residential slash local services zoning sub-district, whereas the other applicants you've heard from today, I'm not sure where they are, but I would presume they're in maybe just a local shopping sub-district, not that MFR slash added to it. And so what we have here is we have a residential and commercial district. And the wisdom of the zoning commission, when they passed the cannabis zoning change, is they did exclude multifamily slash local services from the areas where it's allowed as a conditional use permit. So everyone that appeared before you today, they all got rejected. They got rejected for their conditional use permit, which they have to bring to the zoning board of appeal. But in our rejection, it said it was a forbidden use in the multifamily slash local services district, because it wasn't designated as one of those areas that a conditional use permit would apply. And so we recognized in this application that we have a higher standard, literally a higher legal standard. literally a higher legal standard to comply with um the use. I mean, we are um comforted by the fact that there is this pre-existing retail condition at this site. It's not like we're converting some sort of residential property into um a commercial use. It's a current commercial use. But nonetheless, we're aware of the fact that this is now a forbidden use change that we're going to the zoning board of appeal with, rather than a conditional use change, which just requires all the more need for stronger community support. I would add as an aside that I don't think Boston will be able to get to the fifty-two number, which is the twenty percent of total liquor stores, without having some of these variances in place. There's going to probably be most of these as as conditional, if I had to guess. But I think there has to be in order to get to that fifty-two, has to be a, there's gonna have to be a couple of these forbidden use variances as well. And maybe, Dan, if that answers your question, Commissioner, if I could turn to my colleague to answer the transportation question.
Thank you. Yes, that does.
Thanks. Thank you, Mike. Um, and thank you, Commissioner Holmes. So uh, there there was a a brief touch on the uh cash transportation policy in the presentation. Um, and it's also included in the supporting statement in the uh application packet. But you'll see that it's it's quite similar to uh what I suspect you'll hear from from a lot of these operators in that it's consistent with the uh state licensing requirements. Uh, it follows closely the CMR uh structure on cash transportation. Involves the use of armored transportation, you know, requiring real-time tracking of the vehicles, prohibiting the transportation of cannabis or cannabis products when you're transporting cash or monies from the site to the financial institution. Those those sort of standards, safeguards. To my knowledge, the applicant has not yet engaged with a particular um transportation company. But I, you know, I suspect that as as their process moves forward and they get, you know, closer to to operationalizing their policies and procedures, that'll be something that that they'll keep in close contact with uh with the local police department or local police area chief and uh and and the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if Chairwoman Joyce and the other commissioners have no other questions for the applicant, does not appear they do, we will turn to public testimony. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in support of this application, beginning with elected officials or their representatives?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's, um, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted in a community meeting on August thirteenth, twenty nineteen, um, at the Vine Street Community Center. Since then, we've received a hundred and thirty-seven letters of support. I mentioned, including Counselor Janie, uh, the Dudley Square Neighborhood Initiative and the Orchard Gardens Resident Association. So we would like to go on record to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Are there any other individuals representing elected officials who would like to testify and support? Turning to the public, we've received a request from and I apologize, Jonathan Kroll would like to speak and support. Jonathan, are you present?
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Jonathan Kroll, uh, fifteen Whipple Ave in Rosendale, um, which is around the corner from the Washington Avenue, uh, potential spot. Uh, I am a nonprofit executive. I'm a university faculty member. And I'm formerly um was part of the Fields Corner Main Street Association. And I want to speak to um the community focus and the exceptional level of integrity that Brian in particular has. And I want to speak uh in favor of this opportunity for him and MCS, MCSE. What they've shared is the absolute truth. Since he started his business uh in in Fields Corner, the the pizza shop, Antonio's Hi-Fi, uh, he has been committed and dedicated to developing the community through the business. And I expect that to be the same because of his high level of integrity. Uh, what he says is his truth. Uh, and so I just want to be on record to share that, and thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you. We have a request from uh Perpet- uh, Perpetual Heyfron?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to lift up that this was an amazing and extremely timely pres- um, presentation, specifically in light of, you know, racism being a public health crisis in Boston. And lifted up as such as of June, and for these, this family to be here and be lifting up their community in spite of all of the barriers that they have gone through in their personal lives and what they go through in this world as a result of their identity. This is something that this community needs. I am been in Boston for over twelve years. I am moving back to Dorchester. And I'm really excited to know that this would in my neighborhood. Um, and I'm just hoping that the um, that this business, or if anyone from the city could answer this question. But I'm not sure if there's any barriers that um these brothers and this family would face in this. But whatever can be done as a community to ensure that this goes through, I'd really love to know because this is an amazing um presentation that has been held here. And I know it will be a great staple, not just for the community and for this family, but for generational wealth in Boston to come specifically for black people.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, for the record, could you please state your address?
Thirty-nine Fenton Street, Dorchester.
Thank you so much. We have a request from Desiree to speak.
Actually, my request was for Tracy Booth. Um, she is from the community, and she's having a little trouble requesting to speak. So if we can let her speak now.
Let me see if I can unmute.
Tracy?
Ms. Booth, just one more.
Good afternoon, um, to the commissioner and city officials. I'm, I live at, in the community across from five sixty-one, which is five, I live at five eighty-six Dudley Street. And I'm supporter of the uh MCSA. I've been supporting them from the beginning. They have really have structured themselves to work accordingly with the community and and involve in itself, trying to connect with the community to help make a difference in our community. And I hope that y'all support them as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any individuals, other individuals who wish to speak in support? Are there any individuals who wish to speak in opposition? And the board will take this under advisement. Thank you very much. And moving to the final agenda item, HBV Massachusetts, Inc. And the board has deferred this application to its September hearing to allow the applicant to provide additional requested information in order to adhere to the board's recently adopted rules and regulations regarding disclosures of direct and indirect beneficial interest holders. This concludes the inaugural hearing of the Boston Cannabis Board. The matters heard will be discussed and voted on at the August nineteenth, one P.M. voting hearing. And the link to that hearing and the agenda will be posted shortly. Please note that while the public is welcome and encouraged to attend, additional testimony will not be accepted at that time. Additional testimony may be submitted up until that hearing by emailing cannabisboard@bosun.gov. Thank you for all of you.
Today. Leslie, I'm sorry, um, somebody in the chat saying they had their hand up.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Dudley Street. Is there someone with the name Dudley Street who wishes to testify?
I'm sorry.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I am calling, I am speaking on, from from, on behalf of Stop and Taste Pizza. I'm Gilberto Pena, I'm the owner here. And uh, we're at two thirty-nine Dudley Street, just a couple of blocks down from this proposal. And I just wanted to go on the record, uh, just to give my approval for this proposal. And I've been paying attention from the beginning. And uh, they have been very transparent. And I think that they are the textbook applicant for what Boston is looking for right now. And I just wanted to go on the record, as a small business owners, along with some of the other minority business owners that couldn't be here right now, neighboring me, and that we are in in support for this applicant. And uh, just wanted to be on the record for that and hope that everything goes through. And want to thank them for their application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for missing you.
No problem, no problem. Thank you, no problem.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us. Uh, and thank you to the chairwoman and the commissioners, as well as all of the applicants and everyone who took time to testify.
Thank you.
Thank you.